So I'll call this meeting as you order. August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, planning board meeting for the township of Morris. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the board in preparation of the twenty twenty-two annual meeting notice, which sets forth the date, time and place of the meeting. And by properly posting such notice and forwarding the notice to those designated newspapers and persons requesting meeting notices. Would you all please join me for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, thank you. On the roll call.
Sonia.
Here.
Mr. Alessio.
Here.
It's the nun.
Here.
The dwarfie.
Here.
It's Murphy.
Here.
It's Wilson.
Here.
It's the by.
Here.
The flowers.
Here.
Mr. Benoit.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Fischinger.
Here.
Mr. Slate.
Here.
And I, Sonia Santiago, here. I miss anybody?
Okay, thank you. Welcome, everybody. We're just getting used to going back to regular meetings, and you can see the technical difficulties we had. We are trying to work with the residents to create a safe environment for these meetings. So that the residents can participate fully and comfortably. If you do wish to be in the meeting room during the hearing, we are allowing residents to watch virtually. If you do not wish to be in the meeting room, we are allowing residents to watch virtually in different rooms. There's a room in the back here where you can watch. And then you may come to the podium if you have questions at that time to speak and make comments and to make testimony. Masks and social distancing are encouraged in the meeting room. And the podium and microphone will be sanitized in between comments. If you anticipate providing comments or testimony during the hearing, do not wish to be in the meeting room. Please let us know, the town administrator, engineer, so that we can prepare space in a separate room for you to view this meeting. Does that make sense? Any questions on that? Any members have questions on what we're gonna try and do here? Pat, did you want to say something?
With the chair's permission, legally, for some time now, boards have been permitted to be in person and conduct their meetings entirely in person, particularly with respect to quasi judicial proceedings, such as hearings on land development applications, like the ones, there are two on this evening's agenda. As far as the timing, my understanding is that a determination was made by the board to go back in person, and I believe it was the last meeting, not this meeting. That was our first meeting back in person. It was not related to any particular application. It was, and candidly, many, many municipalities land use boards have gone back to all in-person meetings and hearings long before, a couple of weeks ago, when we first here in Morris Township came back and our planning board came back to in-person meetings. So it's both legal to do it this way. The timing has nothing to do with anything other than whatever night is the first night back, whatever's on the agenda that night, and it was, I think, a week ago, happens to be what's on the agenda that night. And I do know, as the chair mentioned, and I believe the mayor and deputy mayor have communicated to many, that all accommodations, reasonable accommodations, have been made to facilitate the process, to allow members of the public to be here in person, as well as to go not only socially distanced and masked in this room, but we have the alternate, alternate room behind us with the screen, and you can fully participate and watch from there and come in here to the mic to ask questions and to make public comment under oath for protective purposes. Unfortunately, we meetings cannot, of course, be held so as to accommodate the schedule of theoretically every member of the public, of course, or a meeting and a hearing would never take place. So the board is doing not only what's legal, but also what's above and beyond the requirement to try to facilitate the process to get as, engage as much public participation as is possible. And we do have the ability to watch via Zoom, but unfortunately, some of the reasons why participation remotely is difficult is because testimony, when a member of the public makes comment, as well as it should be, in my opinion, it has the full weight of testimony, just like any other witness, just like an expert. Your comments are very important, and that's why I swear you in. It's difficult to swear in from remote. It's difficult to make testimony remotely. It's difficult for all the constitutional reasons we have due process, rights of confrontation, cross-examination, to have someone remotely participate fully and be subject to cross-examination, be able to be viewed for their credibility determinations to be made, all these things, as if it's in a court of law, which we are quasi judicial. We are quasi a court or board. So it's a balance, if you will, just like land use law in and of itself. And that's why I think the board has made the reasonable determination to have in-person hearings which are legal and to facilitate as much as is reasonably possible participation by the public.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to point out that the microphone that's being used for members of the public doesn't seem to be working or is turned off. So I couldn't hear the prior comments. I understand what they were probably about, but if the microphone could be fixed, that would be great.
Mr. Warner, can you also just go over what happens when the connection fails and we have to re-note?
Certainly.
We got video or audio?
Yeah. And of of course, technological difficulties such as we all too often such as we might be experiencing right now are another reason why there's a preference for in-person hearing.
Okay, I don't have to repeat what I said.
No, I don't think.
I'd like to just ask, when you did.
I suspect from my long-winded answer, Mr. Quillen could glean the question.
And I appreciate.
Absolutely, yes.
But when, when you were making that decision, everyone, was COVID taken into consideration? Because in Morris County last week, the, the incident of the new variant was on high. It just dropped today, but it was on high.
Miss Con, I can, I can address that question because it's something that's very important to all of us, but
Thank you very much.
The time that we made the decision to come back was a number of months ago, and at that time, the epidemic was on the decline, and it's just not possible to predict what's going to happen. And a lot of municipalities around the state and surrounding this area have done the same thing. You can't predict how it's going to go. Obviously, there's been the variants coming around. So we don't want to stop the meetings. We need to have the the applications continue. So we've done our best at this point to, to make accommodation for those, for those who would like to have the accommodation. So we've kind of done the best that we can. And, you know, we can continue to examine this possibilities going forward, but for the now, the meeting's been noticed and, and, you know, we just need to go forward. Okay. So then, having said that, let's go forward. The first application, two eighty-four Mendham Road. Ms. Santiago, would you? Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
This is PBO five twenty-two, two eighty-four Mendham LLC for a minor subdivision variance. Block forty-five oh one, lot four. Excuse my typo. Two eighty-four Mendham Row, RA one thirty zone. Applicant proposes to subdivide the property to create one additional lot. A front yard variance will be required for one of the lots as the existing setback to Mendham Road is deficient.
Thank you very much. Start by saying that we, we have two applications this evening. The first one, we'll start off with a timeline until eight forty-five. We'll see how it goes. We want to be able to get to the second one, so. Mr. Warner, do you want to?
Sure. Just as a predicate, Mr. Chairman, I had an opportunity to review the notice, found the content to be sufficient, found it to be timely served. Certified mail on August second, published on August fifth, both at least ten days prior to this evening. So the board has jurisdiction pursuant to a timely and sufficiently contented notice. I made up a word there to hear and decide the application this evening. And I'll swear everyone in one approach.
Okay. Applicant.
He's talking on the mic.
Good evening. My name is Matt. All firms, Sils, Thomas, Gross, and I represent the applicant, two eighty-four Mendham LLC. In connection with this minor subdivision application with bulk variance relief, I stated before, the subject property is at two eighty-four Mendham Road, and it's within the RA one thirty zone district. The applicant is here tonight seeking a minor subdivision where proposed lot four will be approximately eight acres. And proposed lot four point oh one will be approximately three and a half acres. But in reality, what we're looking to do here is we're looking to clean up the site. What I mean by that is that the subject site has two principal structures, each being a single-family home, located though on one lot. So what we're looking to do is clean up the site and have each single-family home be designated to its own lot itself. As far as it goes for variances, it's not triggering per se a new variance, but rather it's a pre-existing non-conformity. Whereas a single-family home has a setback issue for front yard. We are not adding to that single-family addition, but rather that existing variance does carry over to the new minor subdivision, and because it is being self-divided, there could certainly be a question that's now being exacerbated. With that being said, we have received the municipality's reports. We've had an opportunity to review both of those. And in connection with this application, I will only have one witness, my engineer, Mr. D. Fantina, who is to the left of me. And if I may, I'd like to call him up as my first witness and only witness.
And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'll swear him in, as well as our board professionals, Mr. Phillips and Mr. Slate, if you'll all raise your right hand. If all three of you swear to God or firm that the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you all. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
My name is. Yes, my name is David Fantina, F as in Frank. A N T I N A. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree both in civil and environmental engineering, Marcus University. I've been licensed in the state since nineteen eighty-seven. I've been the proprietor of Fantina Engineering since two thousand and one, and I do routinely appear before boards around the state. I have appeared before the Board of Adjustment in this township, but I'm not sure that I've ever appeared before this board before.
Can you please name three land use boards where you have been involved in the past as an engineer and also a licensed moving standing?
And my license is certainly in good standing, and three at random would be Tewksbury Township, Edmister Township, and Little Falls Township.
Thank you.
Yes, no objection.
Thank you very much.
Will you be presenting on, on the screens, drawings?
Only with Sonia's help, actually.
Mr. Slate will help.
Mr. Slate. Okay.
You won't be bringing that up?
If you don't mind, yes.
Okay. In the meantime, Dave, are you familiar with the RA one thirty district?
Yes, I am.
Is the subject property located in the RA one thirty?
It is, yes.
And you take those zoning warrants into consideration when drafting a minor subdivision?
Absolutely. Okay, and thank, thank you, Mr. Slate. The subdivision's up on the board right now. And this is, as has been said a couple of times already, really about as simple a minor subdivision as, as can be envisioned. Board is probably familiar with two eighty-four Mendham Road is quite a large white house on the property, and then a much smaller house close to the road. On this particular map, north is to the right, that is Mendham Road, or what's sometimes called New Jersey Route twenty-four. And the application simply is to cut this subdivision into two, which probably should have been done many decades ago, so each house could be on its own lot. There are no new variances, as has been noted. However, the small house on lot four point oh one, which is a three and a half acre lot, will remain in its present location, which is non-conforming. It's only twenty-two point eight feet off Mendham Road, whereas a hundred feet is required. The only improvements, if you will, that were that we are proposing are, right now, there's a shared driveway, and the board will notice a large shaded area. We'll be taking that, all of that pavement out and adding a new driveway to the big house. A couple of reasons for that. One is just to clean it up so that both the homeowners in the future would have their own lot, own driveway. And in addition, the existing driveway, the site distance is somewhat compromised. So we're giving the, where we can, we're giving a better location for the site distance. And really, that's in a nutshell. It's, it's really just a matter of cleaning up an existing non-conforming situation.
I have no further questions for this.
Board members, any questions?
I have a question. I take my mask down.
Ms. Wilson?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Is there, how, how old was the original house? What was the age of the original house, the big one?
I'm afraid I don't, I don't have an age. Many decades, but I don't know if it was.
Been there a long time.
A long time.
And is there a prior history of applying to subdivide this property?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And given the age, I'm assuming, or I'm asking, I guess, has our HPC weighed in on this application at all, or have they been asked to, Historic Preservation Commission?
We have not gotten anything from them, but remember, we're not doing anything to the structures, at least only some cosmetic things to the structures. There, there was a building permit taken out for the, the larger structure, and some improvements were being made to that. Not part of this application.
And so that was separate?
That was separate.
Okay.
But, but driving by after this, if this is approved tonight by this board, somebody driving by there, whether they have part of the Historic Preservation Committee or not, they won't even know that a subdivision is taking place out.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know. I'm I was at the property, and the, the concern that I have is that the smaller lot, even though it's three acres, if you stand there, it's, it's covered with, I, I mean, it, it appears to be covered with wetlands, I guess. And I guess I would, my question would be, what, what thoughts you might have about future uses for the property, because it's hard for me to envision anything else other than what's there.
That's an excellent question. We did have a wetlands expert go out, and there are wetlands encumbering that property pretty significantly. And I would say that in the future, the only thing that could be done with that property would be to improve or perhaps rebuild the smaller structure on that property. You couldn't move it to the back. For instance, we couldn't say, okay, we want to make this a conforming front yard and move it back eighty feet. That, that would not be a possibility.
Okay, so you've already determined that?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm glad to know that. Um, let's see here. A lot of my questions had to do with just that. So basically, what you're saying is that the existing structure is pretty much going to stay there.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. There were a few other structures identified on the map that I could not see when I was at the property. Can you comment on that? The ice house, the Remains Foundation, the Spring House?
Yes, they're, they're in varying degrees of ruination, I would say. And I would imagine that a future homeowner, if they haven't fallen down already, would knock them down. I believe without exception. On the larger, with larger lot, there's a gazebo, which is nice, and that sort of thing, but the, the structures you mentioned certainly not, not usable, I would say.
Okay. I'm in one of the reports, it asked the question if the existing structure on the small lot is a two-family or a single-family?
Just, it's, it's a single family. We, we have no knowledge of it being a two-family.
Okay. Okay, so there was a question brought up about whether a variance was needed for that as well. You're saying it's not?
It's, no, and it's not going to be a two-family if it ever was in the past.
Okay. And is there currently a septic on the smaller property?
Yes, there is. The applicant had, I believe their name is Evergreen Septic, go out and do some investigation of both properties. The larger property, essentially, the septic's in workable order with perhaps some, some remediation needed. They still have to do some additional investigation on the smaller property. There is a septic system there. Just my guess is that it would need some, some care, if not some replacement.
Okay, so that's separate from this application?
It is.
This is only a decision of yes or no to subdivide.
Correct.
Okay. Um, could you comment briefly on the number of trees to be removed for the driveway?
Yes, if you give me one moment. The new driveway will cause the elimination of six trees. And we will be replanting as required by the ordinance. We wanted to miss those trees. And my first impression was that we could miss those trees. But where the existing septic is, and trying to get some decent site distance, we ended up kind of going right through a few that I thought we could save.
Okay, so you plan to remove about six trees and comply with the tree replace?
That's correct.
Okay, and let's see here. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Yeah. Just had one question on the, I think in the original TCC report, there was a comment on the existing shed that's very near the, would be new lot line.
That will be removed.
That's removed, okay.
Okay. Mr. Quillen?
Thank you. I have a number of questions. The current owner, I'm surprised that there's no representation here from the, from the current owner. Can, can you tell me how, either of you, can you tell me how long the current owner has owned this property?
Couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but I think it's somewhere around a year. He's been in ownership of this subject property, approximately a year.
I see. So like Ms. Wilson, I, I visited this property. I was there today. And I was surprised at the state of disrepair. It seems that someone did their best for a while to try to upgrade the, the main house, the large house. And a lot of work was done, completely. New windows were put in. It looks like maybe new floors were put in, some interior framing work. There was a lot, a lot of work that had been done, but it looks like it was done over a year ago. So that's why I was asking about the ownership change. It appears that someone stopped working one day when the project was, I want to say, two-thirds or three-quarters complete and walked away and never came back. I found an electric screwdriver in the backyard and an extraordinary sense of, of disrepair and neglect. So, so I would advise the owner to inspect this property as soon as possible for security issues. I don't want to say more in a public meeting, but I, I really think that this is, this is a problem property. And I'll ask one question with respect to a well, I believe it's a well that I, I saw as you come in the driveway, it's on the left, partway up the hill, about maybe a third of the way toward the house, there's a cone, like a traffic cone that marks the spot, and there are, there's some plywood sheathing that's covering what looks like a hole in the ground that has masonry construction. It looks like a well. Didn't investigate further, but it looks like a real hazard.
We'll certainly take that, we'll tell our, our client your concerns. I don't believe that's a well. I haven't been on the site for a number of weeks, so I don't think I, I know exactly what you're talking about. Don't believe that's a well, but we'll certainly tell them your concerns. And you're correct. A previous owner, who actually had, had hired me to do some work for him a few years back, was making improvements to the building. I never heard from that person again for a period of many, many months, and the next day I knew there was a new owner. I don't know exactly what happened there, but pretty much what you just described is exactly what happens.
Okay. Some aspects of the, of the diagram are inaccurate in the sense that there's less hardtop on the property than is shown on the diagram. The back of the house, it's just some loose gravel. It's not macadam. It's just some loose gravel. So that's not accurate. And
That is based on the survey, but we'll certainly take a look at that.
Okay. I don't really understand how subdividing the lot will allow the current owner leeway here to, to do what I would assume the, the owner wants to do, which is to sell these as separate parcels or to hold on to one and develop it and sell the other one. The smaller lot with the existing non-conforming structure, that structure looks to me like it has flooded. I did walk back there and get inside. The doors are open. Most doors of the smaller buildings on the property are open or nonexistent. And it looks like there's some mud covering parts of the floor. So it seems like when floodwaters are high, the stream nearby invades the, the lower level there. I, I just don't really see how that's going to be a practical property. But perhaps it can be raised and something can be done. But it just doesn't seem particularly feasible. And I assume nothing can be done about altering the water courses. The Environmental Commission noted that the driveway leading to that smaller structure has partially eroded, and sure enough, it's it's about half gone in certain areas. Looks like there's a dammed area. There's a pond perhaps that was created in the past, and there's a dam that I could dimly see that was, that had water flowing over the top of it.
Yes, to answer your question, that was a viable dwelling at one point in the not very, not very distant past, apparently. And it can be made again, but I agree with you that there's flood damage and that if it's rebuilt, would have to be done in accordance with the NJDP requirements, whether that means raising the structure or making the, the lower level a garage with, with the past roof of floodwaters. Certainly, it has to be done with the current NJDP requirements. Okay. Ms. Wilson? I'm sorry, George, are you done?
No, I, I'm, I'm still, I'm thinking about how, how to ask my next, next question. So there was a building permit issued in the past. Do you know when the building permit was issued?
No, I'd be guessing.
So you don't have any information about what the Buildings Department has, has done in the past about issuing permits or or performing inspections?
I have not reviewed that, sorry.
Right, well, I'm not sure what, what's an appropriate question for, for this board to be asking here, but this seems like a, like a, a problem project, and perhaps the new owner can clean it up. But it's not being brought to us in a particularly good state. So, so I, I guess I'll just leave it at that. And, and that, that, that will be the end of my questions for now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wilson, do you?
Yeah, I just have one follow-up question. So just for the record, if the property is subdivided and somebody comes in and wants to buy the, the smaller property, and they want to, I mean, And they want to, I mean, do they have to come before the board again? Or they just go for permits? They can do whatever. They, they, they have to deal with D E P?
Yes, they have to deal with D E P. And unless they trigger variance relief, they wouldn't have to turn back to the ladies board. It wouldn't be this planning board, but rather it would be the zoning board of adjustment. They would have to appear before.
But we're saying there's not a building envelope on this property that's bigger than what's there. Correct?
No, what we're saying is that if we were to. If we were to redesign this property, there's a strong chance that we'll have to trigger variance relief because we'll segue into the D E P area. Uh, the wetlands area, I should say. So with that being said, we have to be guided along those um, restrictions. For whatever type of building envelope that we would contemplate on the site. And if it triggers any type of variance relief, we'll have to come back to this board or the zoning board adjustment, I should say.
Okay, and you cannot perpetuate the pre-existing non-conformity, right?
Correct, that would also, that would also.
And then build a new one right there, or you could?
Well, is your question if we were to exacerbate that front yard setback by creating a larger home? Is that the question? Because if that were the situation, then we would probably go before the zoning official here in the municipality, and it would be up to their determination whether or not exacerbates it. And if their determination is yes, it does, gets a larger or more intensified use, then that answer would be yes, we more likely have to come back. But again, that's not a decision of the applicant per se. That's up to the zoning official of this municipality to make that determination.
I'm saying if you, just if your future owner decided to demolish the existing structure. Could they put a, a new structure in, in the current envelope where there is? No, because it would trigger a variance, right? Okay.
Yeah, I think that's correct. You're correct. You answered your own question.
Okay.
If it's a knockdown rebuild, then yeah, they'd be fine, yeah. If they want, if somebody wanted to move into the house with the mud in it, I think they could do that. Candidly, I don't mean to be facetious. I mean, but you know, to, to answer your question, which is I think part of what you're getting at, if a, a. Meanwhile, with Wilson, but, but, but short of that, I think it's a fair expectation that uh, anyone would have to get relief from a board. Probably the, uh, the, the zoning board of adjustments. This would be variance relief without an associated site plan or subdivision at that point. Um, and again, what they're asking for here is simply uh, to eliminate. An existing non-conformity, which is right now we have two dwellings on one lot. Uh, as opposed to one dwelling. On each of two lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members? Um, or professionals? Mr. Slate, do you have any question?
Um, I would just mention that if there is any type of approval by the board that the uh, site triangles for the existing driveway should be shown and that uh. Those site triangles should be cleared to improve site distance for that existing driveway and uh, there was some mention of the septics, if the uh. Any improvements should be reviewed by the, the health department. Um, any improvements to the existing septic system. And I'm just going to take a look at the, the corner because I think that uh. If we do look at the uh, existing required building setbacks. There, I think there may be a corner of the lot where you may have the ability to build a structure. But uh, most likely you're in the hundred and fifty foot uh, exceptional resource value setback of the wetlands. And you need permits from D E P, but I just want to spend some time and uh, kind of sketch those setbacks on the plan. But I have no further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Warner?
Um, I think if they've stipulated everything on Mr. On the, uh, did you stipulate everything on the Environmental Commission's report? Okay. Um, and Mr. Phillips' items have been taken care of or will be taken care of. Uh, and so I have nothing, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I'm sorry. I do have one. I, my shed removed confirmation was uh, obtained. Um, but does this proposal, given that, if I recall correctly, some of the uh. Shared driveway in the macadam is or already has been removed. Am I correct that the impervious coverage while not. Exceeding the limit is actually being reduced. Further as a result of this proposed?
It's been reduced significantly, yes.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you. Any board members follow up to it? If not, want to take any questions from the public? Any members of the public have questions for this witness on this project? Seeing none. Um. I'll open up to deliberations from the board.
Mr. Chairman, public comment first?
Public comment first, thank you. Um, absent any. Questions from the public. Uh, will entertain any comments from the public. On this application. Thank you, Mr. Warner. I wish I had to rely on Mr. Warner. Um, seeing none, now we can entertain deliberations from the board.
I'd like to make a motion. We move this uh, application onto approval.
I second that.
With stipulations.
I'm going to assume it's a, a minor subdivision approval and variance relief for the existing, uh, but technically still required front yard setback since it's uh, two new lots now. So the lot configuration has changed, but with all the stipulated two conditions, I got them all if you trust me. I'll repeat them all if you don't.
Chairman, I have a couple uh, so the uh. Impervious coverage, I'm sure we're well below the limit, twenty-five percent is allowed. That should be included in the uh, in the zoning table. And uh. Just for clarification aboard, the application was submitted to the historic preservation commission back in May. And uh, as I look at the, at the building envelope. For the possibility to add a uh. A, a new home if the existing non-conforming structure is demolished. So. A uh, this is the uh, the front line uh, along the western portion of Mendham Road. Hundred foot setback is required, so it puts the uh. Uh, that setback, you know, roughly in uh, in this location where I'm tracing the handback and forth. And then there's a fifty foot side yard uh, setback requirement. So. There is a uh. Fifty foot side yard setback. So there is uh, an area in here um, that has the possibility, the steep slopes would have to be taken a look at, but. Um, there is some building envelope that is um. Possible. For a, a new structure if the existing was demolished without having to go to the board. But they would have to go to a D E P because the uh. Uh, I'm assuming this is going to be exceptional resource value wetlands, and there would be a hundred and fifty foot buffer. That would encompass that entire uh, building envelope area that would be usable.
Okay, thank you very much. Um. On the motion. Roll call please.
Mr. Quillen?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nun?
Yes.
Mr. Dorothy?
Yes.
Mr. Alessa?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. By?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Don't move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have, uh, they're bringing in some technical equipment. Uh, so maybe a five-minute break would be.
Yes, thank you. Oh no, the demonstration of our skills.
Yeah, always. Money was not here, but. A conflict. Maybe right there. We, we used to have exhibits over that away.
But um. Yeah.
No, no, it was, it was.
Oh, it was.
It was about as quick as your comment.
Then one of the witnesses? Did you see, did you see one of the witnesses?
And Normandy. Fire is such a shame. But that, Normandy.
Oh, okay. Yes.
When my wife was young, she lived in. That was at twenty-four. She was still walking across before. Through that neighborhood, she'd go to the fence. She knew all the houses.
And if you're old, yes.
Yeah.
It's like the two. Yeah, no, I just.
Oh, some.
Well, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Christmas in August?
You know what?
The problem is, how's that going to be shared with people at home? You should, you should take that mic out and use it. I don't want to do that.
Take care of.
You need to stand next.
It's good, right?
Yeah. Oh, because I'm not going to be here in Denver, so. Either I'm not going to be able to, either I had to watch all the reporters. They're, I'm sure they're going to want. They'll make it a day. We're done. Done. Us, we've made progress. We got one. So a whole application is done in one night. One lesson now. That one doesn't, you can't even turn that on. No? Got to hold it, yeah. Not, not supposed to. So my question is, if they're going to use that, what are people at home going to say? Like, they just plug that into our system? They can. I, I would think. It changed the feed and did it. Like it was slowed down. Yeah. They're not going to, you'd have to put like a laptop facing it or something.
Okay, let's get started, please. We'll resume. Planning board meeting. August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Our next application, uh, Sonia, would you read this, please?
Yes, Mr. Kim, and this is.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Roll call. We'll do roll call first. Thank you.
Mr. Quillen?
Here.
Mr. Alessa?
Yes, here.
Mr. Nun?
Yes.
Mr. Dorothy?
Here.
Ms. Murphy? Mr. By?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Flowers? Mr. Benoit?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Philip?
Here.
Mr. Slate?
Here.
Mr. Fischinger?
Here.
And I, Sonia Santiago here.
Hey, thank you. Now we'll proceed with Red Bulls P B O six dash twenty-two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is P B O six dash twenty-two Red Bull. Red Bull Arena Inc. for a site plan. This is block ninety-one oh one, lot four and five, one oh one dash one oh three Columbia Road. In the O L five dash P U D zone. Applicant proposes to construct a New York Red Bulls. Training facility for professionals, academy and youth sports. Teams to include outdoor fields, building use for administrative and business offices, gymnasiums and field houses. Athletic training and fitness. Classrooms, dormitories and indoor field. Food service operation, physical therapy and ancillary. Facilities related to athletic training.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have an opportunity to review the contents of the notice, found it to be sufficient under the municipal land use law. And the applicable case law, including the pond run case and its progeny. Uh, and I found the notice to be timely served, cer- certified mail, August third. Published August third, both at least ten days. Prior to this evening. Uh, so from a notice perspective, the board certainly has jurisdiction to hear and decide the application. And at the appropriate time, I will swear in all the witnesses uh, that I'm allowed to swear in, including our board professionals.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, may I just comment, Sonia, when you read this, I thought I heard you say O L five dash P U D.
That is correct.
It's O L forty slash P U D.
Thank you. I stand corrected.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Welcome.
Okay, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Warner, want to? Proceed?
Maybe, maybe we want to have an opening from uh, counsel for the applicant perhaps.
I'm not from, I'm the applicant's attorney. I'm not from the public, but we switched things around a little because we had. Some technical difficulties and we have a full-service engineer over there who went home. Got his TV out of his living room, brought it here for us. Uh, we're doing what we can. Anyway, my name is Nick Rasiopi. I'm with the law firm of Riker Danzig. And I'm here tonight representing. The applicant, Red Bulls Arena Inc. First, let me say that I am honored and humbled. To have been asked to be a part of the Red Bull team. And to have had the opportunity to insist, uh, assist. In really whatever small way. With this state-of-the-art, first-class facility. We will be discussing tonight. We all get jaded, I know I do sometimes, about delivering platitudes about the projects we are working on. But this facility and this project. But this facility and this project deserves any platitudes we may bestow on. As a Morris Township resident myself, I could not be more proud that the Red Bulls have considered this site in this area, in my hometown, to create this premier facility. I know this facility, if approved, will be a testament not only to Morris Township, but to the surrounding communities, Morris County, the state, and really even the country. As you will hear, as contemplated, this facility will really be the first of its kind in this country and will be and will receive national recognition. I believe we are indeed very fortunate to have the opportunity to host the Red Bulls in its facility in Morris Township. It's a true feather, I believe, in our cap and testament to the folks here and on the council that give their time to make Morris Township what it is and what attracted the Red Bulls to Morris Township. Now, like any special project, we have collectively been at it for some time. The Red Bulls for over two years, the town for a year or more. We've been through the rezoning process, the GDP process, and many, many TCCs. These were all public and the public certainly participated along the way. And we all heard in these in these public hearings that this facility, although substantial, will have a much lesser impact on the surroundings than the permitted nine hundred thousand square feet of office space and the traffic associated with that use. That's true, but lesser ass lesser impact does not mean no impact at all. Obviously, development will have some impact on the neighbors. And the Red Bulls are sensitive to that. We know that it's not realistic to make everyone happy when you go from vacant land to any development. We know that. We can only do our best. So what have we done? What has the Red Red Bulls done? From the start, we have engaged the public. We arranged the town hall, public meeting at the Governor Morrison, which that was at the inception really of this project, and it was very well attended. We heard public comments at that time and concerns. And we said at that time that we intended to keep these lines of communications going as the project developed and evolved. And that's exactly what we did. We believe that we essentially tried to create a dialogue with the with the neighbors. By my count, we met by Zoom with the Columbia Park HOA Board three times and what we recently met with the full HOA. We also met with Green Knoll Featherly Neighborhood three times. We met with the mayor, we met with the representatives of the Morris County Golf Club. I was even authorized to say by the club that they support this project. That doesn't mean they won't have some comments, but they are in favor of this project. And those meetings were in addition to many emails, many Zoom meetings, and old-fashioned telephone as well. I know a little bit about Morris Township. I've been here for a long time. And I know a little bit about Morris Township Land use. And I can say with absolute confidence that there has never been more public outreach quite like what we have seen on this project and with the Red Bulls. I can tell you that the Red Bulls have already acted on public input. We heard the comments where possible. We've already incorporate incorporated those comments into the site plans. We didn't wait to come here to hear your comments to incorporate them. Many of these are already incorporated. You're gonna hear more about this from the professionals. But let me, by example, we moved the academy player drop-off to the main parking lot. We permitted ingress and egress via the service road. We added a double line on Prescott. We extended the side.
So the connection to the loop around the pond. We agreed to pay it, move out of the trail along the service road in Columbia Road, which is where we were not permitted to by government service. We relocated the loading dock to an enclosed space below the main building. We addressed wet areas north of Stockton, where a ward of permanent pond and along the north trail and service drive.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, very sorry, the microphone has cut out again.
Mr. Quillen, can you hear us?
I can't hear Mr. Rasioppi anymore. But I can I can hear you.
Okay.
That's been going on for only a few seconds.
We're looking into it.
Hello.
Steve, this is.
Hello. Testing?
Yep, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I was just saying, we relocated the competition pitch to the west side of Stockton, and we lengthened the existing berm along Stockton to create additional planting buffer for the main building. And we improved the bus buffers along Stockton to address the HOA's experts. HOA retained an expert for landscaping, one of the best in the business. We incorporated just about all of his comments. So that's what we've done even before coming here tonight. And tonight we are here to begin the site plan process. I can tell you, I'm happy to say that the site plan that has been submitted is consistent with the zoning and GDP as would any project of this size. Really, we are requesting a design waiver and a few technical variances, but otherwise, this site plan preserves the integrity of the zoning and the GDP. And that that's it for me. And now I'd like to get started with much more important and interesting folks than me. So I'd like to introduce my first witness, Mark De Grandpre. I introduce or maybe introduce Mark to many of you. He is the team president of the New York Red Bulls Organization. Mark oversees all aspects of business operations for the New York Red Bulls, including the professional and academy team, the Red Bull Arena, and the current training facility. Mark graduated from Southern New Hampshire University. And in addition to serving as the director of marketing for the global Red Bull brand, which actually helps to spearhead the entry of the Red Bull beverage into North America. That's some job, Mark. He has also held top marketing positions with international brands Kind, Snacks, and IMAX. He rejoined the Red Bulls in April two thousand fourteen and was named MLS Executive Executive of the Year in two thousand fifteen. Mark really has worked tirelessly with his team on making what which was once just a vision closer to to a reality, and that's why we're here tonight and throughout the process. Just an unbelievable commitment. I know because he's been there whenever we called and we had many many urgent calls and he's always gotten on and made himself available. And a leadership to his staff, current and future players with this facility. Family, you'll hear about family and community has only become stronger. I've had the pleasure of working closely with and getting to know Mark throughout my representation of the Red Bulls, and I really could not be more thrilled to welcome him, his team, and the amazing project to Morris Township.
Hey, Mr. Grasso, before we go any further, we'll take this till ten o'clock tonight. I'm suspecting it will go beyond that, so we'll take it till ten and talk about where we go after that. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll swear in the witness as well as our board professionals.
Please do.
And and I'll swear in the subsequent witnesses sequentially as they appear. So, sir, if you'll raise your right hand, and Mr. Slate, Mr. Phillips, and Mr. Fischinger, if you'll do the same, do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you all. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Witness.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Nick, for those kind words. First of all, I want to thank you, members of the planning board and of the community for coming out tonight to hear us out as we come one step closer to bringing to life our vision of building this world-class complex in Morris Township.
I'm sorry, could you please spell your name so everyone knows?
Mark M A R C. Last name is lowercase D E space capital G R A N D P R E.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So for those of you who have not met me, as Nick just mentioned, I am the president of the club. I've been with the club for over ten years and with the Red Bull brand for close to eighteen years. And I am overseeing everything that has to do with the club, our training facility, our stadium, our youth programs along the way. For anyone that knows me, as Nick insinuated, my family comes first, right? I am a proud husband first, and I try to be the best father I can be to my two kids, one who is going off to college in a few weeks, and my daughter who attends high school at the Duran School of New Jersey in Montclair here. So we've made New Jersey our home. We're committed to it, and we're committed to the community we live in as a family. My second priority, as you would guess, is obviously this organization. And for every member in our organization, I can tell you that their first priority is their family and their community. That's the orders to which we prioritize the way we operate as a club. As Nick mentioned, this complex will be where our first team, our professional team practices. It will be private and secure setting. There will be no distractions for our players, our staff. We'll also have our minor league team, which we call Red Bulls Two. We'll have our academy development program and our youth programs working out there as well also. And you have my word that Morris Township and this community will be extremely proud of what we will build and how we will maintain it and how we will behave and just run it day in and day out as this comes to life. This complex will play a major role in continuing to establish our team as the premier club in Major League Soccer. And this will feed our system to enable us to be continuously competitive and also develop great young men and women in our local community. As you know, the Red Bulls have been a charter member of Major League Soccer. We were one of the first few teams back in nineteen ninety-six. We originally played our matches at Giants Stadium. Now we play at what I would say is the nicest soccer-specific stadium in the world in Harrison, New Jersey. Red Bull Arena is our home. We've been there for almost ten years. We also have a women's team who plays there. Gotham FC is a partner of ours. They play all their matches there at Red Bull Arena. And we host a multitude of events. And just recently, we hosted one of the best clubs in the world, FC Barcelona, and it was a fun event for everyone. Our success on the pitch has been there. Over the last eight years, we've been the best team in the league, winning the regular season championships three times. And over the last twelve years, we've made the playoffs. It is the longest active playoff streak of any professional sports team in the New York metro area. As much as we're delighted about all this success on the pitch, what we're really proud of is what we do and what we represent in our local community. Our club's mission is to develop, engage, and inspire the local community through the game of soccer. That's what we do, and there's nothing more important to our staff, our players, our coaches, everyone in the front office, that we commit to our local community. And let me just share with you a few examples of what we've done here. As of this week, through a partnership with Procter and Gamble, it's a program called Free Kicks for Free Meals. We've donated over twenty-nine thousand meals to the New Jersey Community Food Bank. And that is ongoing, and it's going to continue going on over the season. This is very important for us, and we are committed to our community. And a very important and meaningful initiative that we've had since two thousand fourteen is a strategic partnership we have with the U.S. Soccer Foundation. Back in two thousand fourteen, we sat down with them and decided to develop in the metro New York area mini pitches that would provide a safe environment for kids to learn, play the game, and be engaged after school. Since two thousand fourteen, at the end of this year, we'll have built twenty-five mini pitches around the New Jersey and New York area. It touches eight thousand children a day, and it offers them free clinics after school that will help them develop their skills on the pitch and also just become better individuals and make better decisions along the life. So every year, every day, we touch eight thousand kids through these mini pitches in our local community. So do the math. That's a lot of kids since two thousand fourteen that we've been engaged with. If you take that further through our youth academy programs, it's a major part of who we are. It's the fabric of our club, and we touch a lot of communities. We have a partnership with about a hundred and twenty local youth soccer club in New York and New Jersey. We have a hundred and fifty coaches representing our club in the local communities in the area, and we touch about forty-two thousand kids through that program and their families annually. We're extremely proud that we have a very strong relationship with the Morris Elite Soccer Club. It's been ongoing. It's been great. And speaking of Morris County, you'll soon hear from our very own and your very own Connor Lade. Connor is the role model for what we aspire to do through our complex that we're going to build in Morris Township. Connor emphasizes all the great character traits, grit, resilience that we want to bring to light through these kids and develop great human beings that are going to serve their community. And that's what Connor's doing now after his career, working for us. And it's largely in due part because of the great family and the great community he grew up in. So we're extremely proud to have him here with us, and he'll share his few words with you in a moment. As I conclude here, I just want to tell you that myself and all our teammates in the organization are very fortunate to have the opportunity to be here in front of you tonight to bring this new project to life, working in partnership with the community, the town, to make sure we bring it to life the right way. And we share the same values you do of integrity, humility, respect, and character. Trust me, that is who we are, and that is what we will live every day while we're in your community. What's most important to our organization as we go into this partnership and this development is that we become great, kind, good neighbors that are caring, that operate with high integrity every day. And this will remain our priority year after year as this program develops. We I pledge to you that each and every day, you will be proud to have us in your community. There will be no doubt that we will make sure you're going to be very proud of what we do every day. I want to thank you all for being here tonight on behalf of the entire organization. Before I pass over the microphone to Connor, we're going to play a short video to give you a sense of what this club is all about, and then Connor will share his personal experience with the club and what it's meant to him.
Yep, the Exhibit A one. Yes, Exhibit A one.
What a community. What a community is when you care about how those around you. Contributions to each other that make a community whole. Red Bull's values have ingrained in me from the ground up, shaping the person I am today. The passion driven throughout the club beats in the hearts of all of us. Allows me, my family, the front office, and my teammates to have deep connections with the places we call home. We are about raising the next generation through this beautiful game, developing them to flourish and give them their weight, not only on the bench, but within our community. From trailing highs in the harder road, this state-of-the-art facility is about building a second home together for work and for play to develop the next generation of soccer talent. Even though our match dates are at Red Bull Arena, our home will be in Morris Township. Our dream is to bring world-class soccer to the neighborhood to inspire all of us and make our community proud. Welcome to our home for the next generation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll swear man. And it's my understanding, Mr. Chairman, after perhaps a couple of witnesses, since they're all testifying as to certain general facts initially, there'll be opportunities, of course, for members of the public and the board to question witnesses.
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you.
Sir, raise your right hand, please. Thank you. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Name and address, business address is fine for the record. Or the pitch.
That's right. Mark, first off, thank you for the kind words and gracious. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Okay. Yeah. Connor Lade, C O N N O R, last name L A D E. And business address would be 600 Cape May Street, Harrison, New Jersey. Zip code, I'm gonna need 07029. Got it. Thank you very much, Mark. Thank you for the kind words and the gracious introduction. And members of the planning board and members of the community, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to talk to you guys. I've been with the club for over 10 years, eight as a player, and now two and a half years in my current role as Senior Manager of Alumni and Player Relations. But I've been born and bred here in Morris Township, New Jersey. I'm a proud product of Morris Town High School, Frelingheisen Middle School, and I also attended Thomas Jefferson School, as well as Woodland right across the street. I was raised right down the road, stone throw away from the new training facility. And in fact, my neighborhood that I grew up in actually backs up to the proposed site. As a kid, you could find me most weekends with my siblings, Michaela, Karen, and Brenna at various soccer fields around the area. I can finally recall my childhood of playing soccer at Frelingheisen Middle School most weekends with my family and friends. I played with the Morris United Soccer Club and then eventually went on to play four years at Morris Town High School from 2004 to 2008. As Mark said earlier, the Red Bull's mission is to develop, engage, and inspire within the community. During my time as a player with the Red Bulls, I realized that the values of the club match up perfectly with the values ingrained in me from growing up in Morris Township. I also realized the most important work doesn't necessarily happen on the pitch. It happens within the community. Special platforms our players and coaches and staff have to assist the neighbors have made a lasting impact on me. While a player, I took part in many community initiatives. Just a few, 11 days of service, which included helping out in the Morris Town Soup Kitchen, as well as the Morris County Habitat for Humanity. I would also make regular hospital appearances and visits to do my help in cheering up kids who have been dealt an unfortunate hand, giving them some encouragement and letting them realize that their dreams can happen. I also met my wife while working at Red Bull Arena, and we happily reside still here in Morris Township, New Jersey. We're bringing up both of our kids, Avery and Kellen, within the community. And I'm proud to say that one day my kids will walk the halls of Morroton High School where I also attended, and they can see their dad's name in the Morris Town High School's Athletic Gallery of Honor. And we'll be right down the street from the proposed site. It's a true honor to stand in front of you all here tonight to share my background and my upbringing, as both the Red Bulls and Morris Township have shaped me into the person I am today. Thank you for your time and attention in welcoming our club into this wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, do you have any other administrative?
No, no other questions or similar.
So at this time, then we have, we're going to call administrators, Mr. De Grandprey and Lade. Any questions from board members? On these witnesses? Seeing none, any questions from members, from the professionals? Jim, Paul?
None here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I'll open up for questions from members of the public, just for these witnesses. Sir? You just need to come up and make comments can wait, but if you have questions for them, then you can ask a question.
Simply about the project or?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Just about these witnesses.
Yeah, the procedure is each witness can be questioned on the testimony they provided relevant to the project. So if you have questions of either Mr. Lade or Mr. De Crem, the first witness, my apologies, the the, with respect to their direct testimony, you can address those questions to one or both of those witnesses.
I'll wait till another. Okay, thank you. Any questions from the public for these witnesses? Seeing none. Mr. Garcia, you want to proceed with your next witness?
Next, we'll ask John Amorosa to give you an overview of the site. Just so you know, John is John was the Director of Construction for the Red Bulls for a pretty long period of years. John tried to retire, but the Red Bulls wouldn't let him go. So now he's some kind of consultant, but he's the project manager for this site. So John, I think Steve will swear you in and then can give the board the benefit of experience and education.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And we have, well, again, your name and business address would be fine.
John Amorosa, that's A, M as in Michael, O R O S A. Business address, I'll give the same one, Red Bull Arena, 600 Cape May Street, Harrison, New Jersey. As Nick commented, my previous employment, I worked for the Red Bulls for 15 years as their Director of Construction and Building Engineer for Red Bull Arena. I was responsible over the course of that time for the development of Red Bull Arena from the inception through the completion of that project and also the current training facility in Hanover Township. I was instrumental in the planning and design and construction of that project through today. There's constantly things that happen on that project that I'm still involved with. So I've been retained by Red Bull to be their owner's representative for this project and to help give you a little bit of a background on the project, where we started, where we're at, and then go through a little bit of a detail of the site to give you an overview of the operations of the project.
And just one quick question for clarification, if I may. You're testifying as a fact witness only and not as an expert in any profession, correct?
I could if you want me to.
Well, I'm gonna defer to your counsel. Okay.
Okay.
Good enough. Then just for clarification, it's fact testimony only, at least thus far. Thank you. Please continue.
You're welcome. So just a little bit about the project itself, you know, we identified this project site in the fall of 2020 for the next generation of the New York Red Bulls Training Grounds. And one of the things that Mark mentioned in his introduction and Nick mentioned also in his introduction is that the project is to remain competitive in professional soccer, you know, the, you constantly have to evolve and move the needle down and move the needle up and move the ball down the field to continue to develop and bring players out of academies and out of other areas and also just the players that are on the team to help with their professional development and to keep them competitive. So, you know, it's kind of, I don't want to use the term an arms race, but it kind of comes like that with any professional sport that to be the best, you have to also have the best facilities. And this is that next step to make this the next, to bring about that next generation of athletes for Red Bull. So two things with that, you know, I wanted to point out to everyone that, you know, there are two major missions for this facility. The first one is that's the training facility for the daily training of the professional athletes that are members of the New York Red Bulls Major League Soccer First Team and also the second team that plays in the U S L. So that is the primary objective for the facility. The second objective, it is for the New York Red Bulls Academy. And that is the youth teams that participate in the U 10, U 11, U 12, and et cetera, through U 20, U 17. Those teams, you know, with that, what that is, it's, you know, people, the youth that are selected for these teams, it's done very selectively and very competitively. So this is not just, you know, you can call up and say, hey, I want my kid to play for the New York Red Bulls. Can you give him a shot? We'll probably say, yes, we can give him a shot, but there's a tryout. There's everything else that goes along with that. There's recommendations. There's interviews. There's everything that goes along with that before somebody is selected to be selected to be a member of the academy. So that's the second major objective is the development of these youth athletes to become professionals. Ultimately, that's the goal, is that we're training professionals to be better professionals and training academy youth to become professionals. Couple of things with the academy program itself. You know, we have a pretty good track record already with the academy and being able to place players at the professional level, both in MLS and in European senior leagues, as well as throughout the lower division leagues within the United States. So the goal, you know, what happens in general is that they either sign a professional athlete contract and go to work for for an MLS team. Hopefully, they are signed and move along onto the, you know, the Red Bulls first and their second team. Or they go wind up on another team, or they wind up in college, winning a scholarship. And that success rate is about 95% of every youth that comes through that program either signs a professional contract or winds up winning a collegiate athletic scholarship to play at a Division One school. We've had a number of our Red Bull athletes that have competed in NCAA Final Four Soccer tournaments for their schools over the years. Since about 2015, we've sent over 70 players to professional leagues out of the academy in the U S and Europe. Currently, there's four academy alumni playing in Europe and 12 playing on MLS first teams and over 60 playing on USL second division. That's the second division team in the United States, second division league, I should say, in the United States. You know, currently, you know, one of our most shining examples of a young boy that started at 12 years old coming through the Red Bull Academy is Tyler Adams. He just made the leap from Germany to Leeds United in the English Premier League. And he's also captain, or when he does play, he's captain on the US Men's National Team and will be most likely be competing in the World Cup as it comes up this fall. Along with that, there's another fellow, Kaden Clark, who has signed with RB Leipzig and also is playing on the US Men's Under 20 Team currently. Addition to that, there's at least three individuals that jumped from the academy to the MLS first team for the New York Red Bulls. A local fellow by the name of John Tulken, who's, I want to see, Madison or Chad? Chad, Chad, New Jersey product. And then two other individuals, Serge Ogoma and Daniel Adamin. They've recently made the jump from the academy level to playing on the first team. And they're both, all three of them are young men that are under the age of, I'll say 21, but I think we're all under the age of 20 at this point. So, you know, obviously, the goal is to continue with this success and continue to develop players that will be successful at the collegiate level and or become professional players. One of the things that, you know, I just can't stress this more than enough that this is not a recreational facility where there'll be hundreds of club teams playing here. That's not the intent of this facility. This facility is intended to be designed around the development of the professional athlete from a youth of 10, 12, 13 years old to the adults that play on the professional teams. As you can see, there on the board right now is the Elessiter Site Plan for the project. No.
Why don't we mark it? It's enough of a question to mark it Exhibit A.
Two. A two. Thank you. I was keeping track, it's A two.
Is there a PowerPoint that we want to mark as one exhibit or a package of slides or something? As long as we can identify or distinguish each one, then we can have a compendium of 27 slides or sheets. John Amorosa? Oh, the other gentleman?
Rich Barron.
Okay.
Or engineer.
The, we can have, we can mark that as one compendium, Exhibit A two. And you'll just either give us page number identification or some identification for each slide or sheet, okay?
So yes, this exhibit is essentially a colorized version of the site plan, taking the proposed development, adding color to it to show the colors, different colors of the fields, the white being the proposed buildings, and then also the proposed landscaping that would be around the site. I just wanted to go through a couple of things in detail. You know, the site is going to be completely fenced in and secure from, and access will be limited to individuals that either can swipe their way into a parking lot or by passing a security guard and gaining access to a parking lot in that manner. Primarily, this is for the security of the players. The players' parking lot is at the southern end of the site. So basically, this drawing is facing north. North is up on the sheet or kind of to the right, I guess, a little bit. And the lower portion of the sheet along Prescott is the southern boundary of the site. The players' parking lot is located off of Prescott, and that would be a secure parking lot where players would have a swipe card that would allow them access to that location. You know, the existing, one thing I do want to point out is that all of the fencing will be within the border of Stockton Prescott and the Service Road. So none of the existing trail system that exists outside of Stockton Prescott and the Service Road would be impacted by that. They'll still be open to the public and the public will be allowed to access those pathways as they do today. We will also, as part of site security, we will have 24/7 security guards as we do now at all of our facilities. And obviously, that'll be augmented by whatever else is going on on the site. But, you know, there's probably somewheres in the neighborhood of two to three security guards that'll be on site most of the time. Guaranteed an exact number, but it will be 24/7 security. There will be security cameras that'll be, you know, CCTV, closed circuit security cameras at the perimeter and obviously at the entry points to the, to the site into the parking lots. Any visitors that are arriving at the site, so, you know, we talked a little bit about how people access the site, they'll be coming up with Columbia Road onto Stockton, and they're either parking in the main parking lot, which is to the north of the fieldhouse there, their building E, Building B, Building B. And or, you know, using the area in front of the main lobby as to a visitor visiting the site. Anyone that's coming for anything that's on the competition pitch, which is Field Eight, would be parking in that main parking lot and accessing that pitch through the northeast, northeast corner of that site adjacent to Building B. There'll be a gated entrance and it would only be open to individuals that are invited and or parents of the control. It's not generally open to the public. The point I wanted to make there. The main building, which is at the lower central portion of the site, Building A. This is where the main operation of the New York Red Bulls MLS First Team will operate out of. Currently, the team consists of 30 professionals. And also the second team with about 12 professionals and a number of between 24 and 30 staff members will operate out of that facility. You know, as part of that, where that location of the facility is, Fields One and Two, that are adjacent to that are the primary fields for the professional men's professional teams to practice on, also giving them a little spillover to Fields Three and Four adjacent to them as well, but primarily they'll be on Fields One and Two. Just in general terms, the first team practices operate between, say, 8:30 a.m. and 3:30 p.m. And that's really when the players are on site. They're actually out on the field for a far more limited time. They would probably be out on the field in the neighborhood of 11, you know, say 10:30 a.m. to noon time, 12:30. They usually don't do more than 90 minutes to 120 minutes in a practice session. In addition to that, the New York Red Bull Academy teams will also operate out of one wing of that building, which is a little hard to see, but the that area right there is, has a patio on the roof of it, but the first floor Uh, that area right there is is has a patio on the on this on the roof of it, but the first floor of that is the locker room space and gymnasium space. And office space for the uh Red Bull Academy teams. Currently, uh, we operate uh five teams, so there are a total of a hundred and eight players uh that are on those five teams. And we have a a staff of roughly twenty four members that staff members, coaches, trainers, uh, and uh, you know, um. The director of the academy, business manager, et cetera, that the support that uh effort. Uh, adjacent to that, on the other side of building A. Would be a residential dormitory building uh for the academy and currently there's uh space for forty four uh occupancy of forty four. Uh, individuals uh in that in that building. One of the uh things that uh we're we're uh we're looking at is as an alternative is the third floor of building A currently. Uh, it houses, will house the New York Red Bull's front office. However, we're proposing an alternative to that to turn that into a regenerative space. Uh, and leave the front office operation at uh Red Bull Arena. That would roughly mean that roughly about a hundred employees. Uh, that uh would have relocated to this facility, will not relocate there and they'll stay in Harrison. And the alternative use would be uh facilitated for the first and second professional teams would use that space. In addition to uh, we mentioned that the New York Rebels youth programs will also be headquartered here. And what that amounts to is there's uh roughly ten to fifteen administrative staff that would work out of here. Uh, one of the things that uh they're they're primarily involved in is uh. Running uh youth clinics and camps and that happens out in the uh in the community. So roughly ninety nine percent of their youth programs occur in the communities in the New York, New Jersey metro area. Uh, you know, one of the things you may have seen is now they reach out to somewhere as an enablement of forty to forty five thousand kids every year. But that's all happening off site. That's all happening, you know, in the individual community. It's it's much more beneficial for the. Youth program to go to, you know, to to Madison, to Chatham, to uh, you know, Harding Township or even further out to, you know, in the. The Harrison area to Carney to uh West New York or even into New York City and and those areas to do run the clinics and run the camps right in those communities. So it's just the the way that it's run. So all of that outreach happens out there. There will be, you know, there will be some camps that are run here. Uh, they uh generally will run uh one or two camps uh during the school year uh during uh vacation times when the they're, you know, used through. Are off uh for, you know, uh, spring break or whatever they call it these days. And then uh they would also run it uh in the summertime for approximately eight weeks. That uh timing uh revolves around uh, you know, drawing youth uh from the local area. It it would not be from far away, would be local to this area. So it could be primarily Mars Township and maybe an area of, say, twenty, twenty five mile radius of this facility. And that would be limited to a hundred and eight. Uh, it seems to be a magic number that they like a hundred and eight uh uh players that would attend these these camps. It just works. From the the feasibility standpoint, the ratio of uh coaches and and trainers to to youth and that that's in 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 general, how that would would operate. Uh, as I mentioned, the academy teams, they would operate uh out of that central spine area and they would use fields uh set uh six and seven uh to the north uh of that that facility. And additionally, they would also use uh field five, uh, which is shown as a a four top. Uh, right now, it's it's depicted as four seventy seven fields. So that would primarily be used for the younger youth. Uh, obviously, they're, you know, the tens and twelves and and thirteen year olds are are gonna play on a smaller field than a in a full size. Uh, field. So that's something that's uh, you know, laid out for them and also that would be a artificial turf field. In addition, we're showing an agility area uh to the west of the uh academy field there, field number uh. Five in that area would be uh used for the academy programs and potentially for the professionals, but more likely for the academy programs. And uh, that would be an area that uh uh would operate only during academy practices. Uh, we're also including a small uh sport court area to the north of field five, uh, adding a basketball court and a tennis court. Uh, for distraction. Uh, one of the things that uh they have found out is that, you know, if you're a youth soccer player and you're playing in an academy, well, all you're doing is playing soccer. Uh, they want them to change their their mindset a little bit. They also want them to gain uh different physical agility by uh doing different sports. So that would be something that would be geared towards the academy players uh to get them away from just uh playing soccer, soccer, soccer all the time. It would uh change that. One of the things that uh. We'll get into a little bit uh later. I'll I'll go through uh some of the other buildings first. So building B, which is right to the north of the competition pitch. Is a field house uh and is designed around having visiting team locker rooms uh for players that are coming to play academy matches against Red Bull Academy teams. Additionally, uh, as Mark mentioned, we have a relationship with Gotham FC. Uh, they currently operate uh out of our uh current training facility. Uh, and also play their matches at Red Bull Arena. Uh, we have designated space within this field house for them if they would like to continue that. We're not a hundred percent sure that they will, but they. They do have that uh of space would be available to them uh to continue in that location. In addition to the uh the the field house besides the locker rooms, there's also a small concession stand and then public toilets uh for anybody that would be attending the uh matches on the competition pitch. One of the things that, you know, I mentioned the competition pitch a couple of times, uh, field number eight, uh, the. What it is designed for is for academy matches and uh during the academy season, which basically runs from uh late August uh through June with a break in the winter time. Uh, they would be playing matches there on the average of, say, once. Or twice a month. Uh, and that would be where another academy, uh, say, the New York uh uh FC Academy, where the Philadelphia Union Academy would come. And bring their teams and would play against the Red Bull Academies. Those matches, they're used up to six games uh being played. Uh, competitively and staggered through the day on on a Saturday with anticipation that the if. Spectators for it will be family and friends of the academy players. As it is today, that's uh currently what we've uh witnessed over the last ten years at our facility in Hanover. That the majority of 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 spectators for these academy matches are friends and family, mostly uh parents that come out with the with the team. Uh, with that competition pitch, you know, there's some conversation of we we would have a public address system and I think we do need to have that as a result of uh. For safety reasons, for making public announcements, uh, for clearing the stands or any other reason and then also just to make. Uh, announcements during the game in terms of substitutions, yellow cards, balls and uh safety. Um. No music would be played except for the national anthem prior to a match. Uh, we also talked about uh field nine, which is on the east side of Stockton. Currently, that is uh a designated as a youth field. It's uh laid out for a nine on. Yes. I mean, ninety nine. It's laid out for nine V nine, which is nine players versus nine players. So it's a smaller field than than you would have for uh the uh higher age groups and. Primarily, that field is designated for future use as uh for youth programs uh for the the summer camps that they run and for the. Uh, weekend camps that there uh are the camps that they run during the their during the year. Um, building C, which is in the middle uh of the site, right north of uh field uh number seven, is a indoor half field. Uh, it's exactly that. It would be a covered field with a half size uh pitch inside of it. And used, you know, for inclement weather, used for professional academy practices. Uh, Jason did add buildings D and E are for planned for future use for a women's professional team and a girls' academy. Now. The difference between the use between um uh the uh current Gotham FC as they're a tenant of ours. Uh, these would be designated for future use if uh Red Bull were to field its own women's professional team. Uh, they're uh not to be constructed in the first phase. They would be constructed in the third phase, those two buildings. And then behind uh building uh. See, the indoor half field is the groundskeeping building. Uh, and that would be the headquarters for the groundskeeping shop. Uh, all of the, you know, uh. Lawnmowers and other equipment necessary to maintain the entire site would be uh housed out of and run out of that operation. Additionally, there's uh some smaller buildings on the uh project uh designated at buildings F two, F three and F four. Essentially, they're support buildings for the adjacent playing fields. We found that, you know, obviously, that one there to the west of field four because it's so far away from building A. Uh, that uh we've put toilet and restroom facilities in there as well as some minor storage space uh for any tackling dummies or things that would be on the adjacent field. And the same thing, where there's a small one next to field nine who has the same purpose, uh, which would have uh toilets in it and a storage space. And a small office that would be used uh for checking in um uh people for for camp. And then additionally, there's another small one that would be constructed where uh building E is prior uh to be used uh to support field five uh before those buildings are constructed. So that kind of gets you through the the overall layout of the site and and the uses. Uh, one of the things I'd point out is that uh as far as field lights. Uh, the only fields that are lit are fields four, five, uh, excuse me, five, six and seven. Five, six, seven and eight are the only fields that are lit. I'm sorry. And uh they're set up so that uh field five could be lit by itself. Field six and seven could be lit independently. And field eight would be uh lit independently as well. And that's all I have for the moment.
Mr. Alessio.
Yes, you um. Fantastic. Um, just say that very impressed with what you put together here. Just talk a little bit about timing of operations. I think you did, but gave us a lot of information about.
Sure.
Twenty five minutes and I only got like kind of an issue right when you're happy with what you're saying.
I apologize.
No, if you could just maybe walk us through some of those details because.
Sure.
You know, the sensitivity to the areas, how late at night is this gonna be going on? When are those lights going off?
Yes, so.
A little bit about that. So we don't ask those questions plenty more times throughout the next fifty years.
Absolutely. I could go with a little more detail. As I mentioned, uh, fields one and two are designated for the professional teams. So those, as I also mentioned, that they generally are on the field from between ninety to a hundred and twenty minutes. It's about all they are out there for practice. Sometimes a little longer, sometimes a little less. And in general, they practice from ten thirty in the morning to. Twelve, twelve thirty, one PM in the afternoon. They're not generally out there any later or or earlier than that. There may be some times when, you know, they're playing uh an away game. Uh, and they might come in in the afternoon and practice before they get on the bus to go to the airport. Uh, so that's.
But our expectation would be that like at six o'clock at night, there's nobody playing on that.
Nobody playing on fields one and two. They would be empty. Uh, they're designated solely for the professional teams as well as fields uh three and four. The same thing, designated solely for the professional teams. The academy teams, and I I do apologize, I did jump over this a little bit. Uh. Uh, I I did have some timing in there for that. The academy practices are generally in the afternoon and they start uh. Players start arriving around two thirty in the afternoon and there's on the pitch from any time. And this varies because obviously there's five different teams, so all five teams are not necessarily out there at the same time. Uh, there probably would be two or three teams, probably two teams at a time out on the pitch and on alternating days. So not not every. Not all five teams. Meet every day. You know, you'll have the younger teams on Tuesday, the older teams on Wednesday, the younger teams on Thursday, the older, you know, it kind of alternates. So that not every team is there at the same time, but you know, they arrive in the afternoon around two thirty, three thirty o'clock after school. Uh, they have some prep time before they're out on the pitch. Uh, and then they're on the pitch from anywhere from uh three thirty to four thirty, five thirty. And even uh when they're alternating, they're would be out there, you say, eight thirty, nine o'clock at night. And that would be designated for fields, as I said, uh, five, six and seven would be the only ones that would be used for academy practices. Um, with that. The way that would work is obviously if the younger teams are there, field number five would be lit. If they're not there. That field would not be lit.
What time of night those fields that what what would be like an expectation of when those fields would be done?
So what we're we're planning on uh adhering to the. Current uh zoning requirement of of ten PM that they would absolutely be dark by that time.
This is the same one for the one that's closest to, I guess, the pond and the uh existing townhomes?
Uh, no, field nine has no lights. Field nine has no lights.
That's that's where the hand is now. That has no light.
That has no lights.
So at night, there's no one play.
There's no one there. There that would daytime use only.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't, one other thing too, just the field number eight, the only time that lights would be lit on that field would be when there is a competition there that would be going later than dark. But uh in general, that'll pro- that field would probably be dark. So the fields that would be. Same same cutoff.
Thank you.
And is this year round? I'm sorry. I'm just, would this be year round? I mean.
So, uh, ac- academy, as I said, the academy season generally runs from the end of August. They're off in the summertime, it's end of August uh through um. December, and then there's a break between December and January and they pick up again in February and it runs February to end of school. Uh, in June. So that's that's the the time of the year that that they would be out there.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members?
Yeah, I'm just a little follow on on the use. What's the difference between weekday and weekend use?
So, right now, the, you know, the academy uh practices are primarily during the week. Uh, the competition. Would would be on the weekend, would be on Saturdays. But that's not to say that there would potentially be uh academy practices on uh I'm for a. The uh uh RDS, which is Red Bull Development Academy, uh, they would potentially play on Sunday, late in the afternoon on Sunday into Sunday evening. But uh the primary weekend use would be cut and playing games on the competition pitch.
The the professionals use the.
Well, generally, on on weekends, they're hopefully they're playing someplace, but uh they there there are possibilities that they would be there on the weekend if there's uh something. Uh, but in general, any the same thing, if if they were on the weekend, it would be uh limited to us, you know, the the daytime hours around around noon time.
And then you mentioned in the summer, there are camps. With roughly the same number of people. That are there for the academy during the year.
Right.
What's the camp schedule?
Camp schedule starts at um eight thirty AM and runs uh to uh three PM. And they generally run that as two sessions. So you can sign up for the full day, which is eight thirty to three, or half day, which is eight thirty to noon. The thing is, is it's capped. So if if you have a hundred and eight players. And fifty of them sign up for full day, there's only fifty other ones that are there for the. The the half day is what I want to get at. So it 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 doesn't doesn't multiply. They don't, they don't allow you to sign up for. The morning session or any after or the afternoon session. It's either a morning session or full day.
Um, and how about we?
That would be Monday through Friday during the daytime.
On weekends, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Time hours.
Any other questions from board members?
So we're just um asking about the operations, right?
Sure.
Okay, because I have questions about the lighting and the buildings, but.
There'll there'll be uh additional testimony on that as we go through and on specific on that.
Hmm, Mr. Crowley?
Uh, I guess I'll pass for the same reason that uh Ms. Wilson just did because I had specific questions about the surfaces and the lights and the. Heights of the building. So so that would be more appropriate for later, it sounds like.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification. Uh, Mr. Antwell, he's testified already, but hi- his testimony was operations, but also sort of overall development or overall layout.
Yes.
Okay, but you're gonna have a witness, uh, engineers, architects, landscape architects. Lights, others who are gonna speak to the specific site. Plan components. Uh, uh, that sort of underlie the general layout and the operations, correct?
Correct.
Okay, if that helps.
Yeah, thank you.
I had a question. So I, I don't have any questions for this witness then. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jeffrey.
Um, John, for the youth field, is that the first phase? I'm right here. Is that gonna be in the first phase? Or of construction or no, the youth field?
Phase three.
Phase three?
Yes.
Um, and then the maintenance. Facility. Um, will there be any? Obviously, I'm just looking at the direction where it's pointing. Is there anything um in the plan to try to deal with uh potential noise from the equipment? To the neighborhood that's right there?
Yes, we haven't fully developed that yet, but we're looking at what noise would be developed. And there is a fence line that runs along the service road on that side, so there would be the ability to mitigate that if if necessary.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, I'm actually, I do have a follow up on the lighting, I'm sorry.
Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm.
That's okay. 10 o'clock at night, is that something that you would? Like, what frequency would you think the facility be lit up that late at night, would just be on?
So how currently the way we operate in in Hanover is that I would say Monday to Friday, there is a general, maybe not Friday, Monday through Thursday, it's generally on until 10:00 P. M. Now, that doesn't mean that there's players on the field till 10:00 P. M. Players are generally leaving the field between 9:30 and and 10:00 P. M. And then the lights are definitely off at 10:00 P. M. Once everybody's cleared and safely in the building.
Okay, so it's a it's a common occurrence to be on until 10 o'clock.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Alessio.
Mr. Joffrey triggered the question. Very exciting what you guys have put together here, state of the art, beyond belief. Given any thought to battery powered equipment that might not make noise, I mean, being that it's so state of the art and this is like.
I'll tell you right now, I are our head groundskeeper or former head groundskeeper, but director facilities in the office, and we do use electric mowers currently on on in the stadium in Red Bull Arena. I don't know what the plan would be for here, obviously, these are larger mowers for these pitches. But we do use walk behind that or electric mowers in that facility currently, so, you know, we're certainly would want to stay up with with the latest and best, you know, technology in terms of mowing and certainly, and you understand too, these are not huge, you know, they're 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 this basically the size of what you would see as a landscape mower, you know, doing a residential property. We're not talking some of the larger seven or 10 gang mowers that you see on the side of a road or something like that. It's a it's a smaller smaller mowers. But there are tractors and other things that are along with it as well.
Any other follow up?
Just to follow up to that, what what kind of maintenance is there on a regular basis on the fields?
A lot. They they probably mow them, I I find out the exact frequency, but there's mowing that happens continuously throughout the year. There's also, you know, fertilizing and seeding and top dressing and and aeration and and other, you know, maintenance items to keep the field growing and in its best condition.
And that's where you make an effort to have the state of the art equipment that's quieter than.
Yes, absolutely, and most of the equipment that we're talking about now is very quiet. I mean, the tractors when they're out there, you could hardly hear them, they're not, you know, I'm not going to say they're the the biggest thing that will be any backup alarms, that's which we can't avoid that.
Ah, yes, okay. Thank you.
For professionals, Jim?
Yeah, just a question on the P. A. System, that is for the competition field only.
Correct.
No further.
Just to follow up on that. Can you just give us the indication as to frequency, days, hours, when that P. A. System would be in use?
Well, that would be for the academy competition matches, so that would be on Saturdays. And I would say roughly from 11:00 A. M. Through 5:00 P. M., 6:00 P. M.
And strictly on Saturdays, John, that's it?
I I don't know if I want to pin myself in that closely, but I would say that that would be the majority of of the times when it would happen. I don't, you know, foresee academy matches happening at other times, but there there are times, I'm sure, when they play matches during the weekend on Wednesdays, if there's a school break or something like that.
You want to get back to us on that with some specifics at some point, just
Sure.
It's beyond this Saturday. Okay, and the only other thing I had was you mentioned with regard to building A. That the top floor may be switched out for the office headquarters to, I think you explained it as regenerative space for the stroke players. Can I assume that if that happens, that there would be a reduction in your trip generation as well as your parking demand?
That would be correct.
Okay, and
That I'll.
Eric Keller will be testifying about that. Okay. And again, I'm presuming that your plans now and your traffic study and and your parking plan takes into account the higher intensity, if you will, which would be the office.
I think I'll allow Mr. Keller to respond to that, but I think it's also predicated on the competition pitch and visitors for that.
Okay, so we'll we'll wait to hear.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr.
Okay, Mr. Warren, any question?
Who's going to address further the phasing of construction, I believe there's a phase one, two, three, that'll be Mr. Barrington? Okay, I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. For members, any follow up to those questions? If not, I'll open up questions to the members of the public. Any members of the public have questions for this witness on? Is Kestner, my proceed, provide, just provide your name.
Andrew Kessler, loving Wolf Road, I live in Columbia Park. My question is, on August 3rd, you you were kind enough to give our community a preview of your community of what you're going to build, but you also showed renderings how it's going to affect our community and views from the townhomes. I would wish that you would share this with the board and the mayor and the deputy mayor, so they get the same understanding as we as homeowners living in the community every day, especially on a Saturday when we want to relax and there's games. You shared with us those specific views and pictures from specific townhomes, you could actually see the townhomes, see where your development is, and there were pictures, you said, with your landscaping and buffers that were four years out with the growth. And to a lot of us, four years out and the growth, it still wasn't blocking it. So what I ask of you is to please share with the board, so they have the same information as the community had in our presentation.
Yes, thank you, Andrew. Those renderings and whatnot will be shown during the landscape presentation. And some of them will also be shown during the architectural presentation.
And and if I may, just to be clear, I'm sorry, you're you're going to have an architect testify with respect to those and a landscape architect testify in with respect to those items when they're shown the board and all members of the public, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you have a further question?
And just to clarify, what are you trying to respect?
Yes.
And we have a, the presentation does include a comprehensive presentation of perspectives from the various streets and from various towns.
I'm just asking that we were by our behavior tonight, so they're on the same.
Understand. We're going to see the whole application. So we have a presentation working on. We like to present it in a way.
I don't know if they like to present.
Mr. Chairman.
We will.
All of this or digest all this.
If you're.
Okay.
They are? Where did you get that?
I think there's others homeowners as well, I think for the township board, the mayor and everyone here to see the whole picture, to be able to see those pictures now, I would think would be very important to get a grasp of this project and.
Actually, we affect.
I'm sorry, but we prefer to get the presentation as.
Well, that was their presentation that they gave us.
No, no, there are different people who are presenting those things later on, and so we'll wait until we get those presentations, I mean, I want to see them amongst anybody else, I understand that they're on the website now. But they need to be presented by the person actually doing the presentation.
Yep, if, but please stay, Mr. Kessler, because if you have further questions, but if I, Mr. Chairman, if I can offer some assistance, just for everyone, including members of the public pursuant to the municipal land use law. The applicant is entitled to present their application, they have the burden of proof the way they wish to do so. It's not uncommon to have particular, in fact, it's probably a good thing if I can narrate a little or or adjust a little, but that's beyond the scope of my authority legally, but but I think it's a good thing to have an a a particular expert testify with respect to each site plan areas, while Mr. Amoroso has not been accepted as an expert, he is providing fact testimony in a sort of an overview way. It is not only the entitlement of the applicant to present those other exhibits through specific expert witnesses, but again, probably to the benefit of the members of the board and the members of the public that those, that that evidence come through with actual experts testifying to them. And the and board members and members of the public have an opportunity fully to question all those witnesses and of course, present any and all evidence anyone wishes to present.
I have what I believe is a related question, I I know there was a public presentation and there apparently was a video made of it. Is it acceptable for board members to look at that?
Well, the evidence should be presented in the course of the hearings and in public and in public meetings. So technically, the board members should only be considering the evidence testimonial and documentary and video graphic that is presented to the board members in these hearings that are properly noticed with members of the public having a full and fair opportunity to view and cross examine and make comment with respect to. So I apologize, there's always a long winded answer, the short answer, if I wasn't an attorney, would be, no, you shouldn't. You shouldn't consider it unless it's presented, you know, during the course of these hearings, just like a trial.
It was my understanding, there was a presentation that was to residents recently, a week or two ago.
But that wasn't videotaped by us.
Oh.
And we asked for it not to be videotaped.
Ah.
Someone videotaped it. You know, that wasn't consented to by us.
Okay.
And again, the the evidence is what's in the in the public hearing, that's that's for purposes of of protecting the public. So that board members are not considering things that are ex parte outside of the, you know, the public hearing that is properly noticed. You know, and the evidence that is submitted through the appropriate fact or expert witnesses. And so everybody has an opportunity to cross exam, see everything and cross examine those witnesses.
I would point out that what maybe the package is referring to, there is a package on the website submitted with all the other application documents that's Neighborhood Views, I think is the title of it.
Well, if and when those items are presented during the course of these hearings, you you not only may, you are obligated to consider them as well as all other evidence that's presented during the course of these hearings.
Just to clarify, the 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 evidence that is posted on the website right now as part of this application, if it's not covered in the hearing, we're not supposed to be considering it?
A applicant's counsel can weigh in if he wishes to do so, but it would be my opinion that if it's not presented during the public hearings, it's not for consideration for as part of your deliberative process and making a determination ultimately as to whether the applicant met their burden of proving an entitlement to the relief sought.
So let me just a point of clarification, Ms. Wilson. We did these perspectives before we knew they were important. We intend to show absolutely, but we have a
You have a sequence.
And we think it falls legally within our presentation, but we intend to show all the perspectives. In fact, John intends to show them, but at a later time.
Yes, yes.
And we understand that if we have questions on those perspectives, that the professional that developed them is the one who's going to be answering our questions. And and that's the important part for the process. So not any other members?
Don McHugh and Aldrich Port. John, as to the main building and the one in front of it, what is the height and the number of stories?
The main building is three stories, the academy building, academy dormitory building is two stories.
There's a three story, so approximately 30 feet.
I think it's approximately, it's it's within the zoning requirement, so it's less than whatever the zoning is, and I I don't want to say specifically because the architect will testify to the exact height, but it's we're we're well within the maximum limit by the zoning on on the height.
That's a good question, and we are going to have an architect actually showing the schematics, and you can see the building, you can see the height, you can see the form, you can see how it how it lines up with the existing townhome, that will be a slide that you could put there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Brian Morgan, 24 Green Knolls Road. I'm sorry, what was the number? 24 Green Knolls Road. Just a few questions on what was just presented. The tennis court and the basketball court, that's the first I've heard about, I feel like that's changed since the previous presentations. Is that going to have lights on it?
No, they will not.
So the expectation is that they're only going to be used during daylight?
Daylight hours only.
Previously, we've been told the P. A. Was only going to be for emergency use, and now I've heard it's going to be for Star Spangled, like the the Star Spangled Banner and announcements during the game, and I also heard that there's clarification. I would just like to also suggest, I'm not sure if this is a question or not, but saying, I would also ask the question, when will the be used and what is the extent by which? It won't be used, basically, I I don't want to be surprised, because again, I'm sure I'll be able to hear this P. A. I want to make sure that there's not going to be, oh, now we're going to start running the P. A. During all the academy games and any other purposes, I just, what is going to limit the use of the P. A. To what you're saying it's going to be now, because it's already evolved? I'm going to ask that.
I would say it hasn't evolved, it's always been for, you know, emergency use, in addition to that, to make announcements at the start or the end of the game and and to make substitution announcements. It's not like there's a running commentary that comes from the the announcer, they would say, you know, goal by number 33, red card on number 34, you know, something like that, it's not a constant stream of of, you know, voice narrative of the of the match going on, it's not a play by play.
Okay, not play by play, but it's more than I was expecting, it's more than emergency usage, and so that's where I would just say we're that's definitely a difference from what we've been told. I would also ask, and I'm not sure if this is part of a future presentation, where are the speakers going to be, are they focused only on the viewing platform? Are they going to be loudspeaker for everybody here on the pitch?
No, they would be aimed towards the bleachers, so towards the enclosed area of the bleachers.
So it'd be safe to expect that it shouldn't have a loud
Absolutely.
Sound, okay. Okay, just quick question, because you said the groundskeeping is up there building F, and I heard you say lawn mowers? How are lawn mowers going to get to the field? Because again, all that noise that I appreciate Mayor Delfi mentioning that the noise would be right there.
So there there's there is the service road that surrounds the site, so they come out onto the service road, circle around and go into the center spine there and get to the fields in that direction, or they can come down that pathway right there next to building E and or that spine between buildings, or excuse me, field seven and eight, and actually pass through the the academy wing in building A to get to fields one and two, there's a a basically a tunnel that allows them to pass through from one side to the other.
Yeah, so they're always going up and around. It seems like some extra drive, and then and I'm guessing the lighting will be discussed further, but I know you and I've talked about this quite a bit, I'm just very concerned and I appreciate the board being very concerned about the the lighting, the hours of the lighting, that it goes till 10:00 P. M. All through the year, except for, it sounds like January is potentially the only respite, seems like that's a whole lot of lighting throughout, so I I don't want to ask too many.
It's also the summertime as well.
Excuse me?
It's also the summertime as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I I would argue the summertime is less of a concern since it's bright out until nine, so.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but, so you know, this is the question, if it's questioning.
Yep, 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 I was just responding to what he said, so that was, thank you.
Hey, thank you, next.
Hi, good evening, Sue Sawchelli, nine Green Knolls Road, I'm just going to.
Sorry, can you please spell your last?
Oh, sorry, S is in Sam, A U C H E L L I.
Thank you.
Nine Green Knolls Road, so I've had this site plan memorized for a long time, and I just want to ask one question to follow up with Brian's question about the sports court. Not worried about the lights as much as hearing a basketball going ba ba boom, ba 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 boom, ba 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 boom, and hearing that. And then having tennis back and forth, and then you're going to have building E finally, and that's all going to be reverberating off. And that's all going to be reverberating off of that. And even though people can't really tell, our houses in Green Knolls and our cul-de-sac is right on the other side of that little outcropping of that little red dotted line you see there. I've had brought up the topic, have you considered putting up acoustic fence along the service road to block that sound like they do in other places when they have pickleball? And they've used this acoustic fence to stop that sound, especially in the winter when there's no leaves. We're going to be hearing ba 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 boom, ba 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 boom, with basketballs and tennis courts.
Well, first of all, you know, the the use of those courts is not going to be continuous. It's it's something that's more sporadic than 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 continuous. Second part is, to answer your question on the acoustics, we are studying sound attenuation for along that north side besides the landscape plantings that are currently planned. We're also studying other noises that potentially we would have to install some type of attenuation for. So yes, we're we are considering that.
Okay.
Where it would probably be located is immediately adjacent to the court because that's where it would do the best.
Exactly.
The best.
Exactly.
You works the best, I guess, is the way the way.
I'm just bringing up that so that other people here also can hear that there's a product called Acoustic Fence. They use it all over with this pickleball stuff. And it works very well. But I think also not just me having presented it to your small group, I think the public should know that that's an option also.
There's other products. There's other products as well.
Right. But, okay. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Jeffrey Riesman, One Addy Place. I've heard two fact witnesses from Red Bulls testify here under oath that this would have less impact on the community that a seven hundred and fifty thousand square foot office building.
I'm sorry, sir, do you have a question for?
Yes, my question is what evidence has been produced that A, office buildings have lights eighty feet, ten, ten o'clock at night? What evidence that they throw traffic through residential areas that require yellow striping? What evidence is there of the noise that they that they go on the weekends? I would postulate, we've seen no traffic studies. I've seen no light studies in any presentation. Will we see them? And can you prove to us that that's the case? And a question for the board.
I'm sorry, sir, one question at a time.
Okay.
Questions for the witnesses who have testified. If you want to open it up beyond just Mr. Amorosa, that's up to the chair. But I believe your question was, are you going to show traffic studies and or lighting testimonial evidence? And and on the, Mr. Chairman? Yeah. All right. Would it would it help, Mr. Rossiopi, if you were to list the witnesses who you intend to present throughout the course of these hearings and what their areas of expertise are very quickly? And I I if the chair so desires.
Thank you. I was just talking to the mayor about that, and I think it's good idea.
Maybe that'll help members of the public and board members and board professionals know who to ask what when and and have comfort that someone's coming later to answer or to testify with respect to a certain area. I'm sorry, Richard Barrington?
Engineering details, the storm drain and the the environmental stuff, the the site plan in general, the engineering details of that. Then after Rick Barrington, we have Bob Zeller. Bob Zeller is from a lighting company called Musco. He's paid to be our lights in the world, basically. And he's gonna testify in detail about the lights, any potential impacts of the lights. After Mr. Musco, we're either gonna have John back or a landscape architect. One of them will discuss the landscaping buffers, what you can expect, what you can see along with the perspectives that have been referenced before. That's Bob Zeller from the from the firm, lighting firm, Musco. After Bob, Eric Keller. Eric Keller is gonna speak about traffic that you mentioned in detail.
Okay.
About what a nine hundred, not seven fifty, what a nine hundred thousand, which that's what's permitted on
Okay.
Nine hundred thousand square feet of traffic, office traffic, research. It's O L forty, allow research. Research that happens on weekends. He's gonna testify with studies showing the traffic that would be generated from that permitted. And Eric will also testify for the planning because there's some hindrance. And finally, with Kristen Burris. Kristen Burris is from Gensler. She's the architect. Architect from Texas. They they went out and got literally the best architects dealing with training facilities in the country. And she will be flying up here and testify with all her pretty rendering with the schematics about someone else about height, height of the the buildings and relations of everything around. That's our
I I appreciate that. I I have a question then for the board, if that's possible.
Well, it's generally, it's this is like a trial. They're they're presenting the evidence and the questions are generally to the witnesses. That said, if there's something that the the board professionals or perhaps the board can help you with, I'm sure the board's amenable. Certainly I am.
Okay, so my question is when homeowners who purchased the homes at Hovnavian's Columbia Residence, they purchased knowing that there was going to be this building that potentially could be there. And that if the board is unconvinced that the Red Bulls are going to satisfy the same needs, the quality of the life that their residents are enjoying, they shouldn't approve the site plan as is, or it should be modified so that the quality of life that the people would envision under the original zoning is maintained. It's simply, to me, unfair to have this put in here and have the quality of the entire community changed on the basis of what, you know, we purchased these homes on the idea of something being there. He's saying it's going to be the same. He's not been truthful with the whistles and the lights to be for.
I I think it might be beyond the particular question you were asking. You might be making commentary, but
I am.
But yeah, unsworn. So technically, it's I'll I'll certainly swear you in appropriate time, I promise. But the the but more to the point, I think you're you're essentially making an argument and not necessarily ask a procedural question or so.
Well, my procedural question, will the board modify the site plan to make it minimally impactful on the people who are there?
The 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 board is going to consider all the evidence presented factually and and expert testimony in every form it's presented, and they're going to make a determination as to whether or not the site plan can be granted under the municipal land use law and the state and 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 the laws of the state of New Jersey. And any zoning deviations that are required, they're going to have the criteria under the municipal land use law to make those determinations. And they're going to deliberate in public before they make that determination.
I'm just asking, do they have any additional responsibility now that they changed the zoning to the people who lived in this community?
The 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 applicant is entitled to proceed under the existing zoning. And the existing zoning was valid validly enacted. But I I think we're beyond the scope, frankly, of of this proceeding. And certainly, it's not a question of the witnesses. And I suspect others are waiting to ask questions of the witnesses, but you may have some.
No, I'm finished.
Thank you. Next.
Anne DeSalvo, I live at four Delano Court. And so the question, I think I brought it up to John when he presented to our community about the loading dock area. And so a couple of questions. Has it been considered or is it a consideration, the narrow width of Prescott? It's not by any means in this standard or average width of a road. It's a private road, I understand. But it is very narrow. It is at most twenty five feet, which is below average. So the question, or not even a question, a comment is, and I did ask John when he presented us the types of vehicles going in and out. I was concerned with that. So I was told that there could be pretty much seven days a week, any time of the day. There could be FedEx trucks, UPS trucks, mail trucks, waste management, food truck, and occasionally an eighteen wheeler. Has it been considered that the access that an eighteen wheeler has to take to turn to get into that? Has that been considered? Because I don't believe in my eyes that that could fit. And I know that because as
Interrupt them, but with the chair's permission, I I think you said you weren't going to make a question.
Okay.
So this is actually question time.
Okay.
But do you have a question of these?
The question is, has that been a consideration of accommodating
The width of of
The width of Prescott and also have you considered two vehicles being able to actually fit inside exiting the ingress and egress out of the actual loading area? Coming out, in and out of Prescott, perhaps at the same time. So that's
I I'm going to defer to my civil engineer, Mr. Richard Barrington, who has looked at all of those issues and will testify to to what his findings are.
Okay, so at a later
Yeah, as 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 everyone's learning, when you have multiple witnesses, and it's understandable, in my opinion, that you you want to ask the question of the first witness because you don't know if, let alone who's going to answer the question later. But that's why I asked the question of Mr. Rossiopi to list all the witnesses and what they're going to talk about.
So comment.
So there's going to be a traffic person, and then there's going to be a civil engineer, one or both of whom are going to testify to.
That I should.
Exactly.
Right.
So so feel free to ask the question.
So is that the traffic and at the
So what what I will say is, you've asked the question, we will answer it during their testimony.
It's going to be Mr. Barrington or someone else?
Mr. Keller.
Or Mr. Keller, who's the traffic engineer.
Okay.
Those two, but
Thank you.
We know what the question is, and we will it will be answered in the
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Good evening. Rich Tangle, sixteen Featherly Road, adjacent to the proposed development. Just with regard to the last fact witness there, can you just clarify again? When will the, whether it's practice or games or what have you? What days of the week will that be occurring? Because I was confused listening to what was presented. And what months of the year will it be done? Because offhand, it sounded like every day of the week, just eleven months out of twelve months in a year. So please clarify that. And residents are, I'm concerned about nuisance factors, so light, noise, so forth. So when is the P A system gonna be heard? When a whistle's gonna be still blowing? When are the lights gonna be on? When are the lawn mowers gonna be mowing? How often? You know, just things like that that you brought up. I just need some clarity on when. I don't need the answer now, but I think
Yeah.
I'd like to know before this whole hearing is done.
I think I can go back over that quickly and and not too quickly, but I'll try to answer it in the order that you asked it. So you asked, when will the the facility be operating? Essentially, it does operate year round. The professional teams are only in season from, you know, late January through December. The academy teams are in season from the end of August through December, a break to the end of January, then in season from February to June. So there's a there's a break in January and there's a break in July and August when there's no academy practices that
Okay, sir, I don't care, academy, professional, just with regard to the the factors that become a nuisance. You hear noise, you see light, there's activity. You don't have to describe who's what and who's who and when, just how often and when. That's I just like some clarity on that.
Well, I think
Residents will be hearing, seeing, and so
But in order to answer your question, I do need to say who it's going to be because understand that when I talk about the professional teams, you're talking about thirty players. When I talk about the academy teams, we're talking about a total of a hundred and eight players. They're not all a hundred and eight there every day, every night of the week. They're probably fifty there at at any one time in a practice session that could start late afternoon and run to seven thirty, eight thirty at night, maybe even nine thirty at night. But that will depend on the time of year, the the amount of work that they need to get in. So what I'm saying is that that there's it's not a hard and fast thing like it's it's the school day, that every day we we start at nine o'clock and we end at three thirty. It it just doesn't happen that way. There's got to be some flexibility in the way that the academies practice so that we're asking for that timeframe to be able to have the lights on till ten P M. But that doesn't mean that every night that they're going to be on till ten P M. That doesn't mean that every field will be on every night, you know, so there's there's going to be that constant variability through that time, but knowing that those are the seasons. Those are roughly the numbers of players that will be there during those seasons. And yes, there will be matches on Saturdays from, say, eleven A M. to five P M. Generally, they don't go later than that.
And Sundays?
I can't say unequivocally that there won't be any matches on Sunday, but generally, they're mostly
It's not restricted to not Sundays, you're saying.
I'm saying, I'm saying
So it's seven days a week.
I'm saying, I'm saying in general, they're on Saturdays, but they could do them on Sunday.
I I think we need some specificity on on that, sir, because a Sunday is a big deal, right?
I understand.
An office building is an open Sunday. There's no traffic, no noise, quiet, you know.
Mr. Amoroso, perhaps
We need to know those answers as a
Perhaps what you could do is put together a schedule which gives an estimate of the teams, who's doing what when, the age groups, the hours, just have like a an annual estimate of what activities will be taking place.
And I would like to present it that way as an estimate and not something that is is
Of course.
And and may I add, just for some relevance, I've been here forty years, so I've seen honeywell, I like stegol, I like chemical, all that. So I've lived next to it as an office and the weekends were quiet. So if someone said, here I'm hearing
Regrettably, the way that this is required to proceed under the law is as a hearing like it is in court.
Okay.
And and the the applicant is entitled to present their witnesses first, questioned by everybody. And then you and everyone else are are entitled to present under oath your comments. And that's why we have to strictly break it off between questions of witnesses and comments.
Okay.
I believe we're in
Sir, I was just relating to like two sentences, okay?
Yeah, but but but
Shouldn't
I understand. Everybody wants to squeeze in a little, but technically
Well, but it's key.
Technically, it's illegal. So so as the board attorney, yeah, because the municipal land use law requires, like in a court, that you testify under oath and that you do so in all members of the public and all witnesses or testify under oath at the appropriate time. This is the direct this is the direct case of the applicant, and each witness is questioned by everyone. And then you present your comments and testimony and any exhibits you have, any expert witnesses you want to present, whatever, under oath. After they present their witnesses, we're not there yet. So it's just questions.
Okay, so
Saying it to you specifically in a in a in a detailed way, not to pick on you, but to help everyone understand the process. Because if people don't understand the reason in how why things have to work a certain way in a quasi judicial hearing, it's understandable. They're going to shake their head and not want to agree to it.
Okay.
But those are the rules that were
Okay, but if you're presenting a fact witness, I there's some clarification that's needed, hearing those facts, you know, are they being heard with clarity?
Clarification.
Right.
Questions, but don't say that you've been here twenty years and what you've observed. That's testimony, not under oath, and the
I'll go on oath later then.
So we'll swear you in later and you could say it, absolutely.
All right, but that was a fact I stated, just saying. Okay, thank you.
You're stating it under oath. Regrettably for you, it didn't count. But you'll come back and I'll swear you in and state it again.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Hi, Patricia Collins for Green Knolls Road. I I realize that I'll be stating this later, but it's about the lighting and maybe one question you can answer. In some of the documents, it said because of the height, possible height of the lights, ninety feet, which is going to blind us all, by the way, in our development. They might have to put strobe lights on and red lights for the air
Ms. Collins, I'm sorry, Ms. Collins, we're going to have an expert witness discuss lighting later on.
Right.
And that might be a better opportunity to ask these questions.
And I realized that, but I just wanted to get to one question regarding that, that you had applied to the F A A, whether or not they would require it depending upon the height. Has that been accomplished, the F A A? Have you heard from them and
We have applied to the F A A for a determination of whether or not the light towers and buildings, by the way, not just towers, buildings. uh, have to be marked because of the proximity to, uh, Maristown Airport. We have not, uh, received a determination yet. We expect something, but you know, they, they are, they, uh, have given an excuse that, uh, they're inundated with 5G cell towers and they can't, uh, can't get to everybody at once.
Well, won't that have to be resolved before the lighting person gets here? Because that's a major, major question. You know, you can't have red bulls on there. One of my neighbors who can't be here, he said
So you, ma'am, you can't testify about
Okay, all right.
Can't even testify yet, let alone with somebody who's not, who's not here. And I don't know procedure that that would be hearsay, that wouldn't be fair.
I, I, I got it.
They can't cross examine that.
But can I ask the question?
You can absolutely ask.
No, I want to, so I know there's a very fine line and I'm just trying to be respectful.
Yes.
And, and clear also. Uh, will the lighting person be able to even give her testimony? If we don't hear from the FAA?
It, it's, they're two completely separate issues.
I don't think so, because
They are.
It depends on
The FAA determination does not, uh, all the FAA will come back is to, and tell us is if, whether or not we have to mark the towers, that's it.
But we all need to know if the towers are going to be marked when she gives the testimony, because that's going to blind us all. In the, both in the condominiums and in Green Knolls Road. Okay, well, thank you.
Next.
Yes, Margaret De Souza, three Green Knolls Road.
And, and can you spell your last name, please?
Yes, it's D E S O U Z A.
Thank you, Mr. Susan.
Okay, I'm only going to ask questions.
I appreciate that. You've started off wonderfully in my book, thanks.
So I want to know, why should we trust the Red Bulls and what they have spoken to us about already?
Okay, and that's
I'm addressing that to Mark. And I noticed the whole meeting that Mark has been sitting out of, outside the room. So I want to address that because trust has to be earned, correct? So I, it's a question, trust
Not a question for this witness though, this witness.
I thought Mark was also a witness. He's not.
And Mark is not this witness.
Oh, I can only ask to this witness and not this
Of his testimony.
Oh, okay. Can I ask to the board too, how many of you guys actually on the board live in our area that will be affected by this?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, Mr. Chairman, if you, if I may, all, all the board members. Mr. Susan?
Yes, yes.
All the board members, as I understand it, are residents of, of the township. Uh, technically, a class two board member does not have to be, but I won't give a, an exposition on the municipal land use law tonight. You've heard enough about that from me already. Uh, but they're all residents of the municipality and they're all volunteering their time, not just this evening or all the evenings you see them. Um, but I can assure you, uh, hundreds and hundreds of hours during the course of the year reviewing plans and preparing for the hearings. Um, and, uh, and they are under the municipal land use law laws of the state of New Jersey. Uh, recognized as residents of the municipality to be best suited uh, to make determinations as a board of on land development applications. And that's why they're up here and, and, uh, and I, I think worthy of appreciation. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, what kind of quality of life do you think, I mean, honestly? How much quality of life do you think that we're going to have now? We have lived in this community.
Mr. Susan?
You said I could ask questions.
Yes, question.
I'm asking questions.
But I don't know that you're listening, because the questions have to be of the witness, Mr. Amarosa.
Okay, Mr. Amaretto, okay.
Susan, in fairness, I think we all know the difference between a question based on the testimony of witness provided and a rhetorical question when somebody's trying to make an argument or a point to the members of the board. Uh, it's, it's proper to ask direct questions based upon the testimony that Mr. Amarosa provided. I think we all understand the distinction.
Okay, what, is the list going to be provided to us on all of these professionals that are going to provide testimony on all of the things that are going to be occurring on this? Is there going to be a list provided to us so that we know when we come to attend, when, what kind of questions we're going to be able to ask at that time?
Uh, Mr. Rasioppi gave the list of the professionals that are testifying for us.
I mean in writing.
I'm sure we can arrange that. We can't know at what time and what hearing is going to occur. But we have the list of witnesses that will be presented. So we can, much however to do that.
I'm sure Ms. Rasioppi, uh, you know, at each hearing, and we're, we might be approaching the close of this one soon. Uh, you can at least, uh, for the benefit of the public and the members of the board, uh, an idea of who, you know, who you anticipate being the next one, two, three, four witnesses. And, and in fairness to everybody, uh, you never know how long something's going to take, although the one thing you generally know is with a hearing, it's going to take longer than you anticipate. So assume, uh, that three, four, five, six witnesses will be, uh, testifying on a given night. Um, but in reality, it's likely to be a lesser number. Um, but you always, you know, they can present, uh,
Well, we
They get through witnesses quickly. You, you want to be here to ask questions if you can.
We would need to know what that's going to be though, because if we have witnesses
He's going to tell you, his best estimate of, and what order, each, each hearing.
Okay. And when was this decided that the Bulls were going to be at this, when this application was done and this was submitted? When was it decided that they would actually have these, this, uh, area to uh, establish this, uh, club?
Resilient plan, but yeah, and then we acted on that.
So I think you said the, something about the fall of 2020 or something where, where, with a res, potential. Uh, I don't know what she's asking.
Has this already been, this, this is already decided, correct?
This is the application for the site plan, uh, uh, the right to be able to have this site plan approved by this board. Uh, as well as any deviations, variances that they require. Nothing's been decided yet.
Oh, nothing's been decided yet.
A, there was
Nothing has been decided.
That occurred, but this is the site plan application, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Kessler, I live Larry Kessler, I live at one Aldridge. I'd like to go back to field number eight. And I'd like to know if there's any study or anything you can tell me about the public address system and the whistles that people will be blowing. How far will the sound carry and will it reach to the homes?
So the, the short answer to, to your question is that, uh, we are in the process of doing sound studies. And the field itself is built with a bleacher that basically covers the entire eastern sideline that has both a canopy and a back wall to it. So any PA system that's mounted on the underside of the canopy facing the seats will be directed into that space and blocked from, uh, exiting that space, uh, beyond, uh, the, the ends of it, not, and not towards Stockton. Uh, whistles, uh, you know, with, with wall noise, we're going to be compliant with the, uh, local and state and local noise ordinances, uh, for noise.
If there are going to be people in the bleachers, what about their cheering and what kind of noises might they make and how far will that carry?
Well, as I stated, the bleacher is built so that it faces westerly towards the field itself. And it has a canopy and a back wall. So any noise that's generated within that space, and I'm not an expert in this, uh, but I have, uh, been at Red Bull Arena, which has a similar type structure with a roof and a back wall around the, uh, the, the seating areas. And it gets amplified towards the field as opposed to any other direction. So it would be towards the field and what, you have to understand too, is, is that the spectators that we're looking at for an event at this is our family members and moms and dads of, of competitors. We're not looking at, you know, thousands of spectators that are showing up to, to cheer these teams on. It's the, the moms and dads that are, you know, yelling and happy for their kids. So I don't, I don't think the noise level is going to be to that extent. Uh, but we would certainly look at, uh, any other, you know, with, with that type of structure with a roof and a back wall. There are ways of, uh, creating, uh, sound attenuation to, uh, keep, uh, sound from propagating off of hard surfaces. And as I said, I'm not an expert on sound, but I know, know enough to get myself in trouble.
Okay, now going to field number nine, which is pretty close to the housing on, uh, Aldridge Court. What kind of noises will be generated there? Will, will the houses be able to hear that?
As I indicated, that field is primarily designated, well, not primarily, but designated for youth programs. Uh, and that would be camps that are happening during the daylight hours. Uh, and you, you know, you're going to have the noise of, of children, uh, playing soccer and, uh, coaches guiding them. Uh, I don't know what other noise besides that.
There might be whistles blowing?
Maybe whistles, yes.
Should there be some kind of, uh, abatement to hold the noise back there, some kind of screening?
We're, we're looking at sound attenuation besides the buffers, the landscape buffers that were already, uh, designed for that area. We're looking at other means of, uh, attenuating any other noise, but we will be in compliance with the state and local noise ordinances.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure Mr. Chairman, can I, if, if, if I may ask a question to potentially help, uh, the line of questioning that was just being asked? The, is, is the NJAC seven colon 29, the New Jersey uh, regulations, uh, governing, uh, uh, sound, uh, 50 dB a during the evening out? Well, it's nighttime hours as they designated and 65 dB a, uh, daytime, uh, hours at the property lines. Is, uh, Mr. Rasioppi, is that something that this particular applicant, uh, is obligated to comply with? And I take it then that, not that we need a stipulation, because if it's the law, it's the law. Uh, but I take it you'll stipulate to, uh, full compliance with same, correct? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have questions?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the gentleman.
Please come to the mic. You state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Vincent O'Connor. I live at three Aldridge Court. I came here tonight specifically to state my support for the development of the field on the west side of Stockton Drive. But I am strongly opposed to the development on the east side of the, uh, Stockton Drive. And my concerns bear mostly from the environmental impact that this would have. And I want to ask a question of John here tonight. That with 80 acres of land for the Red Bulls to, uh, develop on the west side of, uh, of Stockton Drive. Why has the Red Bulls chosen to put the youth field on contaminated land? Land which is under control of an, or has been the subject of numerous hearings and also restriction. I did hear this question being raised at one point in earlier hearings. And the Red Bulls kind of shrugged it off and said, we're going to make it even safer. Because we're going to cap the field. Which now is just exposed grass. But what they didn't say is that they're going to excavate the area in order to construct this field. And if you would have seen the signs that have been on there for the past three years, you cannot dig or open any of this area for construction.
All right, this, I'm sorry, this might not be relevant to this witness.
Well, he is presenting a design plan. And
Oh, now you're talking about the environmental conditions.
I know it's not fine for environmental impact, but why then did the Red Bulls choose and make that decision when they have ample space to put a field on the primary site without having to open the ground, without having to open a discussion and without having to, uh, place many people at risk by having dirt and dirt and dust blowing around our community, which is knowingly contaminating. I know for a fact.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, that, that's your question, right? Why?
Why?
Okay. Mr. O'Connor, the engineer, Rick Barrington, will testify as to the environmental impact of the property, but um, you know, Mr. Amarosa can
Well, I didn't ask what the environmental impact is.
Environmental, we can hear you speak.
No, I, I'm asking a question relative to the design plan.
If you want to know why
I'm, I'm asking the, I'm asking the expert a question and you're now cross examining me. I'm asking the question.
I think, I think the, the, the question was why, why did you pick that spot for, I think you heard the question. Can Mr. Amaroso answer that question?
I was just clarifying because I didn't want there to be confusion about environmental versus choice of spot. The question, choice of spot, Mr. Amarosa can answer. Environmental is a separate discussion.
I understand. I appreciate the difference, but there is a relationship in the two subjects.
So I, Mr. O'Connor, I'll, I'll answer your question. Uh, and, and, and it's, it's, it's going to be kind of a several part answer because it's not just a simple yes or no, and, and I, and I like that spot. Um, you said 85 acres. The 85 acres is the total acreage of lots four and lot five. The plan that you see in front of you represents a development of roughly 50 of those 85 acres. So there's over 15 acres of land that we're not touching. Primarily all of that area along Columbia, uh, and the other areas that you can see where we have open space and, and outside the perimeter. And essentially, all of the development is within Prescott, Stockton and the service road. And exactly. Yes, there, that, that little pan handle that comes down behind those, those townhomes there, that's piece, space there is actually part of lot five. So when we looked at the site, we looked at several things. And the first thing is that we had placed a competition pitch on the other side of Stockton, because that's something that we knew would be something that generally would be accessed by people that were coming to visit. So we wanted to keep that out of the secure perimeter. For obvious reasons, it didn't fit. And then we moved it to the west side of, of Stockton, which meant we needed to find a home for the youth pitch. And that was the ideal location to, to place it. Uh, allow Mr. Barrington to testify in terms of what, uh, what's required for us to, to do that work uh, by NJDEP and also, uh, Honeywell, who still retains some, uh, uh, responsibilities, uh, under the environmental cleanup of the site.
Well, once again, there are nine fields here. And this is probably one of the largest, uh, professional training uh, areas in the country that you are proposing to put in. And I would think, although we haven't discussed the issues of environmental impact, that a design plan should have been or could have been, and why did we choose to go into contaminated areas when we could have used any one of the other
Mr. O'Connor, I, I will point out that there are other areas of the site that are contaminated as well. So that is not the only spot, spot on the site that has contamination. There are areas underneath field four that has contamination and there's other areas that, uh, of the site as well. So, uh, let, let me just put it that
Is not contiguous with homes.
Well, field four, field four is
These are serious issues.
Can we, can we discuss this when it comes to the environmental conditions? Because that is, is an important issue, but it doesn't seem to belong to this witness. It's a pro to hell, it's after 10 o'clock now. So
Restate my question or ask my question at a future time.
Please do.
When another witness is
Ward needs to listen to these questions and answers as well.
Thank you.
One other, okay.
Hello, Alfred DiMiro to Aldridge Court. John, uh, I attended the, uh, first presentation at the Governor Morris. I think it was in I think it was in November. And I believe it was you who said at that time that all construction vehicles would enter and leave by the Honeywell Service Road. Is that a commitment that is still being made?
That is correct.
Thank you. One last question. Have you read the township commission, the environmental commission's study of August fifth about lighting?
Yes, I have.
So when you state that the lights will stay on until ten, you're aware that the environmental commission has some serious issues with that, correct?
I'm familiar with their report.
Will that be entered into evidence, that commission report?
It is. The, the reports of all of, of all reports, all professionals' reports and all reports of various committees, commissions, et cetera, are part of the record.
Right.
But we don't formally introduce them into evidence because they're part of the record already.
Thanks. I would, I would commend to all of the neighbors that they read that who have concerns about lighting.
And we, we will have specific testimony on that, on that report.
Right, but it was nice to see the environmental commission take a strong stand on our behalf. Thank you.
Make it quick. I know we're at the end again and just bear with me one second. Again, Andrew Kessler, I'm at eleven Wolf Road. And actually, my parents, Judy and Larry, they're actually One Aldridge Court, which actually you could see if I could point. My question is regarding field nine, which is behind all of Aldridge Court there, backs up to those townhomes. And these are the homeowners of Aldridge Court that are here. What are the hours of operations of field nine and the days of the week that you foresee that field being used? And the disturbances to the homes that are on there, their decks, their bedrooms facing that field?
Monday through Friday, nine AM to four PM.
And you spoke about camps. Would that field be used for camps?
Yes.
I just asked that and you didn't say that at first. I just want clarity. You just said Monday through Friday.
Yes, and that would be for camps as well.
Okay, what about weekends in the summer?
No.
Not.
Monday through Friday for camps, nine AM to four thirty PM or four PM, whatever I said previously.
And once again, a question. As stated before, and I'm not going to talk about environmental, picking that site that backs up to people's decks, their bedrooms, their windows, their home, their property. That effect Monday through Friday from nine to four thirty, was that considered when you have this whole access here that doesn't back up to homes in that proximity?
Mr. Kessler, when I'm saying Monday to Friday, nine to four, four PM, that's not every day of the week. That's not every day of the year. That is primarily for use for camps. So that would be several weeks during this, the school year when there's vacation time and in the summertime.
So summertime, when they're out enjoying their decks or having family over or barbecue, that's going to be the most impact of those homes. And that's what you're testifying to.
I, I would argue that barbecues would be on the weekend and I'm saying the, the time of use is Monday through Friday.
I'm saying the homes, the people that live along those homes.
Okay, we have the answer to that.
Thank you, and I'm sorry if I, but.
I'm sorry. It's. Will this the last person asking questions? Otherwise. Okay, we'll do one more question.
Jim Kavanaugh, eleven Featherly Road, resident. Jim Kavanaugh, at eleven Featherly Road, Morristown resident, fifty-four years. I'll restrict my comments to questions. And I only have one question to John. Really appreciate everything here. To John Amberosa, I wonder if you, as the consultant who has given us this information tonight, would consider maybe lifting the restriction, at least from the Red Bulls viewpoint. I know this is a quasi-legal proceeding and we have to go back and forth. But I, I'm compassionate to some of those people in our community that was mentioned in the earlier part, either because of COVID or elderly or whatever cannot get here. And I'm wondering whether you would lift any restriction similar to, you have interviewed Green Knolls people three times and others from Columbia Park three times. And for those people that may feel that they're on the outside, whether you would be willing to accept questions that they can swear to, not that you need to give answers, but that it could get into the record so that the esteemed board could measure it.
It's a legal question.
How the legal process runs. He doesn't have.
That's a bit, right?
The way and the stuff of the board, board legal process.
Yeah, the only reason I asked the question was because I didn't think I could address anything to the board in the question.
I wouldn't try to address any of this, Nick Warner, right now either.
The, I, I, I thought we addressed it earlier, but the, yeah, the board has made a determination irrespective of this application, for all their applications. A couple of weeks ago, they made a determination, I think a few months ago, or a couple of months ago at least, but that as of a couple of weeks ago, the board would be returning to in-person for all its hearings. That hasn't changed. And unless and until that changes, that, that is the protocol that we are required to continue to observe, including the fact that the meetings were noticed accordingly. That, that participation by way of questioning and public comment and all other participation could only be via in-person. And as I mentioned before, the reasonable accommodations were made by the board and by the township. So again, short answer, unless and until something changes, that's not the protocol and the procedure for these hearings.
I understood and I appreciate that answer. In fact, the mayor had basically given us answers as to what you had said, and I respect that. It's just simply, I'm saying that because of COVID has gone up and down, we're kind of caught. And I'm just saying, if the Red Bulls didn't have any objection, I realize that you can't do that. But on the one hand, they have been very cooperative with the community as far as I'm concerned, and it actually expedites these things if they know the questions beforehand, quite frankly. So I just rest my case and it's up to you if you can do anything. I, I just leave it in, in your hands. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we can talk about adjournment for the next meeting?
That usually starts with Sonia.
Okay. I know she's looking at her calendar.
Sort to, you know, given the amount of people here that having, they have to wait through another application. Is there any special, special meeting?
That would be up to the board.
I mean, we'd like to request a special meeting if, if possible, not only for us really, but also for the community that has to wait through other application plans. This application, you know, can take the whole meeting, at least one more and maybe not three.
Maybe three.
Well, generally, generally, we, we schedule special meetings through Sonia. She can poll the board members as to their availability. So after this meeting, we can talk about scheduling a meeting now and afterwards, we could talk about scheduling a special meeting.
Sonia, do you have our next available regular meeting?
Yes. Our next regular scheduled meeting is September twelve.
And so the only legal question was the special meeting and the reason I requested it is because if a special meeting is scheduled down to twelve, and we have to re-notice everybody and just like three hundred notices we have to send out. It's a big chore to send out, but we, we try to notice everybody and more than what was required to notice. And so it really is a huge chore. If you decided to a special meeting here and announce it, there'd be no more notices. That's the only reason I request it.
So the, the September twelfth meeting currently has one item on. It's an application for an amended site plan at two ninety-nine Madison Avenue. That's the old Edwards and Kelsey Building, the top of the old Glen and, and Madison.
I think what the applicant is asking, is there any way the board could get to the point of actually scheduling a special meeting right now?
Right now.
I, I suspect I know the answer, but I'm not going to. But I just wanted to clarify the question.
Why don't we schedule a meeting for the twelfth? And in, in the next day or two?
We're gonna have to redone, yeah.
Yeah, because it's very difficult for all of us now to, you know, I apologize for that.
You have to be noticed, I think. The notice extra here, we have to schedule a time to, right? So we have to build in that time for publication.
Right, 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 right. So if I understand correctly, Mr. Asiope and the board were carrying this matter to September twelfth, is that correct? Okay, I suggest for the benefit of the members of the public, this matter is being carried without further notice to September twelfth, seven PM. The expectation for the venue is the same location. The municipal building in person at seven PM on September twelfth, again, without further notice. And your next anticipated witnesses, Mr. Asiope, as we said, for the benefit of the public. Civil engineer?
Yes.
And do you, do you, are you able to anticipate who the next one or two witnesses thereafter would be? Time permitting?
Well, they can, they can arrange that for after the twelfth.
So hopefully that helps give the members of the public an idea of who's coming when, so to speak, what the topics are going to be. But again, as a reminder, there, it's at least theoretically possible that all witnesses could testify at every, you know, at the next hearing. So don't, you know, if you can make it, please do.
And then Mr. Asiope, if in the meantime, you want to ask for a special meeting for beyond the twelfth, that you can do, that we would have time to, to do.
So what I was thinking of was that in the next few days, you pull a board for a special meeting after the twelfth.
Right, you can work with, with Sonia on that.
And again, for the members of the public, any subsequent meetings, you'll get at least notice at this, you know, at a hearing. Assume, you know, if it's without further notice. So, I think someone has.
Yes.
Engineer going to cover the environmental? Yes.
Okay. Well, now we have this scheduled. And motion to, well, actually, we're not going to adjourn here. Okay, so this hearing is over for, for this evening. Just for this evening. And now what we do is we open up the meeting to comments from the public unrelated to this application. If anyone has any comments related to this board or general things unrelated to this application, you can ask question, you can make comments. Seeing none. Second? Second, all in favor? All right. Okay. Thank you, everybody.